Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Members of the Public. We welcome you to our Public Hearing Meeting of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors. Today is Tuesday, July 16, 2024. We take note that a full complement of the Board is present: The Chief Executive Officer, County Council Executive Officer, and our Sergeant-at-Arms are all here to assist. We'll begin today's Board meeting with the county's land acknowledgement. This acknowledgement demonstrates our responsibility and commitment to truth, healing, and reconciliation, and to elevating the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of Los Angeles County. We are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work on these ancestral lands. We are dedicated to growing and sustaining relationships with native peoples and local tribal governments, including, in no particular order, the Fernandino-Tatavium Band of Mission Indians, Gabriolino-Tangva Indians of California Tribal Council, Gabriolino-Tangva San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians, Gabriolino Band of Mission Indians, Kish Nation, San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, San Fernando Band of Mission Indians. To learn more about the First Peoples of Los Angeles County, please visit our website. Before the Executive Officer calls the agenda, I will turn it to Supervisor Han, who wants to acknowledge some special attendance in our chambers here today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, right here on the front row in our hearing room. It gives me great pleasure to welcome the students who are here from the Bank of America Student Leaders Program. In addition to the students, we also have their mentors who are here with us: Asia Baker, Graciela Moron, and my cousin, David Han. Every year, hundreds of community-minded high schoolers are accepted into this program where they get firsthand experience in serving their communities through a paid eight-week internship with nonprofits, just to name a couple, like the Boys and Girls Clubs of America and Habitat for Humanity. Students also have a chance to see how nonprofits, governments, and businesses collaborate to meet our local needs, which brings them here today. I had an opportunity just before our meeting this morning upstairs to meet them and hear who they are. They live all over, and they live in all of our districts, and their goals, and they're all... They have extremely high expectations for themselves and the goals that they want to achieve. So please join me in welcoming them here today.
Very good. We do welcome you. We're glad you're here. Executive Officer, please call the agenda.
We will begin on Page 2, Public Hearing Items 1 through 3. These items will be held for hearing. On Page 4, Administrative Matters, Items 4 and 5. On Item 4, Supervisor Mitchell requests that this item be held. This item relates to Item 6. On Page 5, Orders for Introduction. On Item 6, Supervisor Mitchell requests that this item be held. This relates to Item 4. On Item CS1, this item is an addition, as indicated on the supplemental agenda. That completes the reading of the agenda, Madam Chair.
Executive Officer, please play our Code of Conduct.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors is about to commence. A Code of Conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's Board hearing, and the Board encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the Board must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the Board's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules: Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the Board. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with Board members or staff. Please remain respectful of the forum and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements toward the Board, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and Board members, and may not clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the Board meeting. And finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify the Sergeant-at-Arms or other county staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Today, we'll go into closed session first, and when we return, we'll begin with Public Hearing Items 1 through 3, then Item 4 and its related Item 6, followed by the item not held by the Board, and general public comment. Before we begin our Public Hearing Items, Executive Officer, please read the call-in information that was also provided on our agenda and explain our speaking rules.
For Members of the public wishing to participate remotely, as indicated on the agenda, please call 877-692-8955 and use participate code number 4433663. Members of the public participating remotely and in the boardroom, you will have the opportunity to address the Board throughout the meeting. You will receive up to one minute to address the Board on each of the public hearing and held items; one minute to comment on the remaining consent item and the closed session item; and one additional minute for general public comment. Please note, once your time has expired, we will immediately move to the next speaker. For Members of the public joining us remotely, when the Board moves to the item you wish to address, promptly press 1, then 0, to be entered into the speaking queue. Remember to turn down the volume on your device as soon as the moderator calls on you, or there will be an echo. You will need to press 1, then 0, for each item you would like to speak. To ensure we hear from both in-person and telephonic speakers, we will alternate between the two speaking queues. Members of the public who are in attendance, when you hear or see your name displayed on the screen, please come down to the front of the boardroom, and staff will assist you. Please do not approach the podium until directed to do so. We will begin by calling in-person speakers, and while they are coming forward, we will take telephonic speakers.
Members of the public and colleagues, before we go into closed session, we'll take a public comment on the closed session item only. For Members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 now to comment on this item. Executive Officer, please call the Members of the public who have signed up to speak on our closed session item.
Madam Chair, there are no in-person speakers who have signed up for this item. Moderating, we have the first remote speaker, please.
Our first participant comes from Eric Preven. Please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Yeah, thank you, Supervisors. I know you're going into a closed session today, and we're not exactly sure, but I wanted to... I was listening carefully to the land acknowledgement, and I read that the Kish Nation has filed a lawsuit against the Archdiocese of Los Angeles, the county, that's us, and the nonprofit L.A. Plaza de Cultura y Artes. This is very embarrassing. Hundred graves were piled together in the back of the place, as opposed to... which is a direct violation...
A closed session item is about the proposed fire ballot measure? So if you could focus your comments on that item, that's what's on our closed session agenda. Thank you.
Well, you have a closed session that's on anticipated litigation. Is that not... I'm sorry. You've interrupted me now. I'm gonna have to reorient myself. Anyway, I think that it's important to air out what these lawsuits are about, because as you know, you've amassed an enormous compounding liability, like a credit card swelling with debt, thanks to County Council's...
Thank you. Your time has expired.
I was looking forward to...
Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers in queue to address the Board.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment on the closed session item. Executive Officer, please read us into closed session.
In accordance with Brown Act requirements, notice is hereby given that the Board of Supervisors will convene in closed session to discuss Item Number CS1, "Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Anticipated Litigation", as indicated on the supplemental agenda.
Thank you. We're now back in open session. Executive Officer, please read our report of action.
On item CS1, no reportable, reportable action was taken. Also, item five will also be held for discussion.
Executive Officer, please swear in the members of the public who are requesting to address the board on public hearing items.
Members of the public, including in-person and remote speakers who are requesting to address the board on the public hearing items, please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Please note that in the testimony you give before this board, you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
We'll begin with item one. For members of the public on the telephone, please press one then zero now to comment on this item. Executive Officer, please read in the short title.
Item one is a hearing on the fiscal year 2023-24 hazardous vegetation and defensible space abatement enforcement charges, to confirm the agricultural commissioner, weights and measures, and the consolidated fire protection districts hazardous vegetation and defensible space abatement costs to be assessed to owners of designated parcels of land or improved parcels. No departmental statement was submitted and correspondence was, was received.
Are there any supervisors who'd like to make comments on this item? Seeing none, executive officer, please call the members of the public who have signed up to speak on this item.
Will the following individual please come forward? Red Chi Pun. Please come forward and staff will assist you. Moderator, will we have the first remote speaker, please?
Our first participant is Eric Previn. Please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Yeah, thank you. FYI, you're not supposed to go in to talk about item five without it being agendized as a closed session. I don't know if that's what you were talking about, Mr. Yin. That's not kosher. But this one, there is a little bit of opposition. People from Castaic have said that this has been a non-sufficiently funded situation for years, but reducing the amount of service puts zones in a downward spiral, and apparently this guy lives in 37. I'm looking at your own public comment. By having public hearings in this strange environment that are kind of a little wonky, and as you see, there's no speakers, I think what you do is you push away the public. First, a closed session to marinate, people don't have no idea, gonna go in there for a long time, and then this kind of thing. So why don't you keep the current assessments? Don't go for this increase, and try to follow the Brown Act, and maybe Harrison could announce per interpretation of the Brown Act as it relates to committees, per last reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers in queue to address the board.
With that, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and vote on this item. Item one is before us. Moved by Supervisor Barker, seconded by Supervisor Han to approve the item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Horfath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horfath, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
We'll now move on to item two. For members of the public on the telephone, please press one then zero now to comment on this item. Executive Officer, please read in the short title.
Item two is a hearing on the annual living and collection of assessments for all zones identified in the fiscal year 2024-25 Engineers Report within County Landscaping and Lighting Act, districts one, two, and four, including any changes and improvements, the proposed diagrams, or the proposed assessments. A departmental statement was submitted and correspondence was received.
Are there any supervisors who'd like to make comments on this item? Seeing none, executive officer, please call the members of the public who have signed up to speak on this item.
Will the following individual please come forward? Red Chi Pun. Please come forward and staff will assist you. Moderator, will we have the first remote speaker, please?
Our first participant is Eric Previn. Please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Yeah, it's unfortunate. I gave my comment on this one in, under, I thought, I was speaking about item two. And now, so item one is the abatement of hazardous vegetation. Are we, is it okay if I speak on that? Or, I mean, now everything is so confused. One other, was this a spiral?
No, we announced item one at that time, and now we're on No, we announced item 1 at that time, and now we're on item 2, so you would need to focus your comments on item 2.
All right, let me focus my comments on item 2. Item 2 follows item 1, which I really wanted to talk about earlier, but I got screwed up and started talking about 2. Anyway, all of this is about raising money. And what I thought was interesting was to get Kirk Florin involved. It's always nice to have weights and measures balancing a little bit to sort of help out. And I know the fire department are the ones who have the structural problem. So we thank Mr. Florin for willing to assess people, being willing to assess people. But I don't know how we're going to solve the structural fire problem on a larger basis.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Andrea McPherson. Please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Yes, I believe that the previous gentleman, he was confused about the items because on the agenda, it basically says administrative matter. And I am, that's item number 2, 4. And I wanted to speak about that. I am in favor of it. Again, my name is Andrea McPherson. I used to be a co-chair of the Department of Mental Health Service Area Leadership Team 5 and executive co-chair with LA Care. Please, better than we're alive, we are struggling with unethical practices from business and our own consumer protection.
This item is on the annual levying of assessments for county landscaping and lighting districts, so you would need to focus your comments on that item, please.
I'll wait till item 4 is called. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next speaker?
Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers in queue to address the board.
Okay, then it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and vote on this item. Item 2 is before us. Moved by Supervisor Mitchell, seconded by Supervisor Solis. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Motion carries, 5 to 0.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item 3. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 now to comment on item 3. Executive Officer, please read in the short title.
Item 3 is a hearing on ordinance for adoption amending County Code Title 12 Environmental Protection to increase the annual fees for hazardous waste generators, hazardous materials, California Accidental Release Prevention Programs, and above-ground petroleum storage tank facilities, and add an exemption to Section 12.64.040 in Chapter 12.64. No departmental statement was submitted and correspondence was received.
With that, are there any supervisors who would like to make remarks on this item? Seeing none, Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who have signed up to speak on this item. Item 3.
Will Red Chi Fun please come forward and staff will assist you. Moderator, when we have the first remote speaker, please.
Our first participant is Eric Previn. Please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Thank you. And it goes up to about $539 from 520 this rate. And I note the exemption for restaurants that make CO2 go into the, so Coca-Cola, for example, because they do deal with hazardous material, but in a limited way that people accept. So I think that this is a decent, a decent idea. The idea that not-for-profits don't have to comply with parts of this particular ordinance worries me because I know that the foundation of everything you do is safety and equity. So I don't quite understand. I mean, I don't want to saddle not-for-profits with horrible fees, but you saddle everybody with horrible fees. So I'm wondering if that's kosher even, to just kind of decide, oh, well, if they're not making money, they don't have to comply. And I probably have that wrong, but feel free to clarify it. And thank you for your diligence on this stuff. And so does not good for young people. So just a point out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers in queue to address the board.
With that, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and vote on this item. Item 3 is before us. I will move it, seconded by Supervisor Han. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Motion carries, 5 to 0.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item 4. County Code Title 8 Consumer Protection Business and Wage Regulations, adding Chapter 8.60, tenant right to counsel, which will be taken up with item 6, County Code Title 8 Consumer Protection Business and Wage Regulations Amendment, which were held by Supervisor Mitchell. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 now to comment on these items. Rafael Carvajal, Director of Consumer and Business Affairs, and Kelly Lobianco, Director of Economic Opportunity, are available for questions. Supervisor Mitchell, I will turn it to you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And thank you for reading, since we've had some members of the public confused about what item is being addressed. I'm glad that you clarified that this is the tenant right to counsel to establish a program to provide legal counsel for covered individuals in the unincorporated areas of Los Angeles County during eviction proceedings. So thank you again, Madam Chair. And today's right to counsel ordinance makes the county's existing stay housed LA program an ongoing program for tenants to have the tools and supports necessary to stay in their homes. I'm very proud to be a part of a board that continues to be a leader in strategies to keep people who are housed in their homes. We often talk about trying to stem the tide of people entering houselessness. So this effort is really important. And increase permanent housing options through preservation and new construction. Keeping our focus on solutions that work is key to solving for the housing crisis impacting every county resident. I'd like to thank Supervisor Solis for co-authoring the July 2023 motion that I brought forward, as well as the Department of Consumer and Business Affairs and County Council for all their work in drafting a very comprehensive ordinance. And finally, I'd like to thank the residents and the advocates, who many of you are here today and many who have expressed support for this kind of effort over an extended period of time. You have been instrumental in helping us get here today. So why is this important? The right to counsel ordinance is part of a larger vision to achieve universal access to legal representation for every Angelino in both civil and criminal cases, where LA residents, regardless of income, will have the ability to access affordable legal services. This ordinance is a significant step towards realizing this vision for civil cases. Though, as I underscored last summer, we cannot forget about our constitutional duty to provide attorneys for all persons facing criminal charges. As many Angelinos know all too well, legal representation in housing is expensive and unaffordable to too many working people, and it continues to be an equity issue. We know that Black and Latin people experience the highest rates of eviction compared to other racial groups. And we also know what an eviction on your record does to you. Read an amazing book a number of years ago, Evicted, where it equated, and eviction to a Black woman is equivalent to a felony charge to a Black man in terms of your ability to just move in the world, to get future housing, to get school loans, to just do any number of things that we all probably far too often take for granted. According to DCBA, from May 2022 through today, Stay Housed LA has facilitated over 1,800 full-scope legal cases for county residents who live outside the city of Los Angeles. Nearly 97% of these have resulted in either the tenants staying in their home or favorable settlement to move to a new place. This data demonstrates this program's important impact for our county residents. I'm pleased the Stay Housed LA program has secured funding for fiscal year 24-25, which means right to counsel will be funded in its first year. I think that's really important to note, that we've got the funding for 24-25. However, additional ongoing funding will need to be established for future years. It's my hope that if Measure A passes in November, it is a funding option for La Casa to consider, which would be a good thing. But why pass the ordinance now? Well, if we pass it now, it'll place the Stay Housed LA program and the right to counsel in line for the county's fiscal resiliency prioritization process for future budget cycles in the event the Measure A option doesn't pan out. But I hope that's not the case. So I'll continue to remind my colleagues that right to counsel, it really is important to be funded so we can make sure that this service can be provided to our residents. The board, in concert with the advocates across policy areas who work hard every day to fight for housing, economic and criminal justice, must continue to align and prioritize the full spectrum of tools that supports all aspects of housing across all funding sources and in our county budget. Right to counsel is just one of the many tools the counties, the county really should employ to keep people housed and to meet the diverse needs of Angelinos. As we discussed last summer, I continue to hear from small property owners in my district, many of whom are Black and Brown, that the county's housing laws are complex and hard for them to navigate for both small or mom-and-pop landlords, as well as tenants alike. And that's why our motion last summer tasked the Department of Economic Opportunity to provide a summary of existing or new potential resources that can support small mom-and-pop property owners, including but not limited to legal assistance. So it's been a year, and unfortunately, the DEO has not yet provided that report back. It's critical that we consider all recommendations to support small property owners who are a vital component in providing and continuing to provide affordable housing in LA County. I'm proud to lead on an impactful county policy and really ask for everyone's support today. I've got a couple of questions for department heads, Madam Chair, if I may. Thank you. I'm going to start with Ms. Lobianco, the Director of Department of Economic Opportunity. So I understand that your upcoming report back to the board will provide critical recommendations on how we support small property owners. Can you please share when that report will be completed so we have a picture of our entire kind of solution?
Yes, thank you, Supervisor. Short answer is that DEO will have our report back submitted to the board by the end of July, so within the next two weeks. It's in active development right now, and we are presently vetting and finalizing our recommendations. So I just want to emphasize, I understand how critical these points are in terms of talking about education and outreach, and also supports for mom-and-pop landlords as we advance this ordinance with an effective date of January of 2025. The coming months are going to be very important for us in terms of planning and timely deployment of an outreach engagement campaign to mom-and-pop property owners with DCBA and to our residential landlord community, and for the necessary discussions on scope, budget, timing for a supportive program development, including a legal aid program. So we will be back shortly with that. So our apologies for the delay, but we know it's critical to get done in advance of this ordinance.
Thank you. Are there any, can you, have you identified any barriers? I know that there's been lots of conversation and disagreement on how we define mom-and-pop, you know, what constitutes a, what constitutes a small property owner. Have there been any barriers, barriers you've identified so far in really trying to come up with this report that we should frankly be aware of?
Yeah, I would say two, two main things in terms of barriers. I think we're, as we're contemplating outreach and potential programming, making sure that we really understand the scope and outreach channels for impacted businesses in the unincorporated areas, really understanding the true numbers. So that is something that we've been working on with DCBA and in our, in our own due diligence. And then knowing that there's scarce resources, prioritizing legal services and other capital access opportunities for our smallest property owners, and making sure that we are recognizing that they do face financial hardship during the pandemic. And data shows that they also have limited access to education programs and resources that might prevent foreclosure and other negative outcomes. So I think that, that is where sort of our research and conversations have led. Some of the other things to just point out as we're making sure that we're prioritizing our smallest and most in need mom-and-pop landlords. So, you know, I know we've had conversations over the last few months around definitions. We know that nationally, half of property owners have between one and four rental units. 70% are owned by individuals, and many have limited awareness of programs. So as we're thinking about how to deploy a legal aid and potentially other capital resources for mom-and-pop landlords, making sure that we're targeting property owners who manage rental properties with four rental units or less, match, matching standards that we see at the city and elsewhere, making sure that they demonstrate hardship due to non-payment, such as those whose revenue is their only source of income, or they have a high mortgage payment-to-revenue ratio, and that we're looking at small property owners in the highest, high, and moderate areas of LA County. So those are some of the considerations. And then in terms of our legal aid program for mom-and-pop landlords, some of the considerations that we are talking through are scope and scale. You know, you'll hear from DCBA on the scope and scale of some of the legal services for their right to counsel, but making sure that we are reaching a level that is supportive, and also making sure that we're engaging providers that are not sort of in conflict, who are providing resources to tenants and also to landlords. So all those things are under consideration, but like I said, we know how critical it is to bring this information back to you.
Thank you. And we often talk and speak on this board about the challenges around outreach to vulnerable communities. And, and language access is going to be critically, critically important to, for both populations. And so making sure, you know, nothing is more painful to us, I believe, as policymakers, that we work to identify new programs and fund them, and the people who need them the most don't know that they exist. So working to make sure that outreach is culturally and linguistically appropriate and, and focused, I would say. Mr. Carvajal, quick question for you. Again, we've talked about the $68 million in rent relief that is important for both populations. It's critically important to help people stay housed. Are you able to estimate thus far how many units this program has supported and helped people maintain their housing?
Thank you, Supervisor. I am, actually, as of July 15th, we've approved $46.4 million worth of grants to go out and support for our rental assistance program. This breaks out to about 20, about 2,300 households. We don't know the exact composition of the household yet, but this is something that we will provide in the evaluation of the program. But if we take the estimate of 2.8 individuals per household in LA County, we could safely estimate or extrapolate that we've held about 6,600 people stay housed as a result of this program so far.
Excellent. Thank you. Again, I'm very proud of us getting to this point. It's been a long, long road to getting to a right to counsel. I'm glad that we're here today and ask for the board's full support. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Barker.
Thank you. And thank you, Kelly, for that response in terms of getting a report to us that's going to be thoughtful and encompass really a lot of the issues that we don't necessarily think of when we're putting together a proposal. So I appreciate that. I'm just curious, Rafael, this was for you. How, we've got through LACTA, the public housing. How does the program propose to resolve issues related to LACTA evictions where the county is funding the tenant's right to counsel and also is the landlord? I'm just, I'm more curious than...
Yeah, no, thank you for that question. That's been an active discussion that we've been having, both on this, on this dais a few months ago and then collectively with, with our partners. So this program actually doesn't impact LACTA because the decision has been made not to include administrative hearings as covered proceedings for the right to counsel. That, not to say that we don't work regularly with the LACDA. Emilio and I can consistently connect over our overlapping programs to ensure that they're as efficient and effective as possible. As a matter of fact, my team and his team are currently working together to make sure that there's some synthesis and, and effective communication between both of us to ensure that both his programs are operating effectively.
Excellent. And then the county has been running, you know, the pilot program Stay Housed LA for more than three years. And I know you cited 6,600 that we've been able to stay housed. Do you know the total amount of evictions filed in the unincorporated areas? And how many of those cases were upheld by the court? And how is DCBA working with the courts to compile and use all this data?
Yeah, access to data, unlawful detainee data has been something that we've been working on for a long time. Even, we had a bill that went, made it to the governor's desk, which actually was vetoed, that would have provided us access to that data. But we've been, built a really good relationship with our partners at courts right now. And as of last year, they've been trying to provide us their data on a regular basis. Unfortunately, the way that they gather... Unfortunately, the way that they gather their data is not as nuanced enough where we could drill down to the unincorporated, but we can make some estimates of the 43,000 evictions that were filed last year. We would estimate about 20% of those if we look at population basis. But we are looking to make sure we're able to drill down. As a matter of fact, my team actually met yesterday with the court's team on the data and trying to figure out how we could best help them give us the right information. But this is something that we're looking to do on a regular basis, on a yearly basis, not only for the unincorporated, but for the entirety of the county, so we can share with other municipality, our partners and your staff to help inform decisions around this work.
Yeah, I think it'd be important for us to find out maybe there's root causes or things that we can do to prevent people from facing eviction. So that data, I think, I, well, I would feel that data would be very important moving forward in terms of lessons learned and where we need to, to look at maybe issues when Kelly's putting a report together that were unintended consequences or things that we can help to prevent.
Absolutely agree. And I think a combination of that data with our rent registry will help us inform who the owners are, who the folks that are being impacted, and what are those common issues that we could try to address upfront.
Great, thank you for that. And then Fiza, I know that the budget, this is ARPA funds. And is it, I mean, is a proposal for it to stay flat at a specific amount or fluctuate? And then if so, I know, and I appreciate Supervisor Mitchell highlighting that we're going to, we're looking at the Measure H as possibly backfilling because it would qualify for keeping people from ending up on the streets. And it checks both the box for housing as well as for prevention. Fiza, how are you building that into the budget beyond the two years, you know, what-ifs, the what-ifs?
So thank you Supervisor. We looked at the DCBA report from April of 2023, and in that report, there is a projected forecast that this cost would increase for the program over time, up to upwards of about, I think it's $65 million in that ballpark. The program is currently funded, as you indicated, for this current fiscal year, which is going to end on June 30th, 2025. And so what we would need to do is start looking for funding for the period that begins July 1st, 2025. That would be an NCC ask, and we would incorporate this need and this program along with all the other priorities of the Board. That's, that's basically asking and seeking funding at that time.
One could argue though, if this goes beyond just unincorporated and county-wide, Measure H would be eligible under the existing formula.
So I, and maybe I misunderstood Supervisor Mitchell. I thought that what she was saying was that under Measure A...
She was. But I'm saying even, even beyond 2025, Measure H, this would qualify for Measure H dollars as a possible backfill.
So that would be, that would basically be a policy decision of the Board. And essentially what it would do is it would, it would shift money to the prevention side of the House, and it would reduce Measure H funding available for those that are already in a homeless system.
But if it was made county-wide and cities could access this money, then we would have a policy across the county, so it wouldn't be piecemeal. Because right now, this is just unincorporated, correct?
So two distinctions, and correct me if I'm wrong Rafael, there are two versions of this program. One is universal access, and the pilot right now is for universal access for all cities, all unincorporated areas. And that is the cost estimate going forward that would be for all cities and programs. There's another, I think, concept of this program that would be limited to unincorporated areas.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that. I mean, I definitely know that over the past couple of years, the Board has dedicated significant time and to addressing the rights and protections of our tenants and property owners. I want to start off by recognizing the efforts of DCBA and the Stay Housed L.A. program for your outstanding work in assisting tenants who need help navigating the complexities of this legal system. There is no question that it, it can be overwhelming and can be very daunting and actually, in many cases, can really victimize those that don't know what their rights are. And I've witnessed firsthand the importance of providing individuals with the necessary tools and resources to support those in need. In the last year, I have visited various service providers and nonprofits in my district that assist the homeless and those at risk of losing housing. During those visits, I heard testimonials from individuals and families facing challenges with landlords over unpaid rent. Some renters wanted to relocate but simply lacked the financial means to do so, while others faced eviction solely because landlords wanted to increase their rent. Unfortunately, many of these renters did not have access to legal resources and really did feel trapped in their circumstances. And I cite programs like Door of Hope and Friends Indeed in Pasadena, who stepped in and filled that void, and they were able to help these individuals who would have ended up homeless on our streets. Prevention programs like these are vital in helping people stay housed and reducing, reducing the rate of homelessness. I believe it is crucial for the county to collaborate with local providers to bolster prevention efforts and address the rising homelessness crisis. Rent, rent relief programs are an important part of the solution, and I want to thank Supervisor Mitchell for co-authoring a motion with me to establish a $40 million rent relief program to help tenants pay back the mom-and-pop property owners. I feel this Board has looked at it in a balanced and fair way, recognizing that there are property owners that are put in a fiscal, fiscal situation that creates a difficulty for them, and also that there are landlords that are not being good landlords as it relates to the tenants that they have. So, you know, I believe that for those, I know that the chamber wrote a letter asking for an amendment. Have you seen that letter? Do you have any thoughts on what their amendment request is?
I don't think there's a need for amendments. Some of the items that they pointed out are things that we'll clearly outline in our guidelines and absolutely will do and take into consideration in the process.
Okay, because you know, that letter was not an adamant, this is not right. It was, there are things, but if those are being addressed, I feel that, again, I'm proud this Board has taken a balanced approach in how we move these type of programs forward, recognizing that it's not as black and white as it relates to, to all tenants and all landlords. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Solis.
Yes, thank you. And thank you Supervisor Mitchell for calling on me to co-author this item, and it's something that is very deep for me and my district because this is focusing on the unincorporated areas and East Los Angeles being the largest unincorporated and highly populated and I would say most impacted in the first district. But I, I want to recognize the advocacy groups that are here that have been actually so persistent because without their help, I know we wouldn't be here today. This has been a long road for all of us and for our departments, and I just want to point them out. Seish Betzetic, East L.A. Community Corporation. Calladitos. Lift your hands. Lift your hands. Inner City Law, Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles, Neighborhood Legal Services of Los Angeles County, Public Counsel, SCIU, 721, and so many other organizations that have worked on behalf of tenants and preventing them from being evicted. I want to say thank you to all of you and for those folks that called my office and also worked with our staff and with Supervisor Mitchell's staff and obviously moving forward to today to have this ordinance before us. I want to personally thank our Department of Consumer and Business Affairs under the leadership of Rafael Carvahal and also our DEO. Thank you Kelly Lobianco for your work and also for County Council for working very hard and diligently on bringing this ordinance here before us today. I want to thank Supervisor Mitchell for introducing the right to counsel in the motion because it is very important. And I, I think that the bottom line for us is that we're really trying to prevent homelessness because we have a crisis. We saw what the numbers were recently in terms of where the spikes were. Overall, granted, it went down a little bit, but not quite. And we know that we have more work to do. So I'm going to continue to do what I can to work with the Board and help prevent and strengthen actually our eviction protections to the most vulnerable. And I think Supervisor Mitchell, you outlined that appropriately by saying that a, a large number of African-American, Black and Latino, Latinx individuals are heavily impacted. But what I find most concerning too is when I looked at numbers that, as you know, Black renters make up 21% of all renters and 35% of all defendants in, in eviction cases. And Black women have the highest eviction rates in L.A. County. That should be something that we really focus on here and understand who we're really impacting. But I want to go further because there was an important fact that came out of the eviction lab and some studies that they provide. And while we, we may have some information, we know that another portion of our communities, the undocumented community, is sorely under-reported in evictions. And partly because they don't understand in many ways that there are resources available to them, and many would shy away from asking for assistance, thinking right off the bat, if they get any kind of public assistance, it's going to be a public charge, therefore jeopardizing their immigration status. So yes, we have to do more to protect all of our vulnerable residents, but more importantly, giving them the information as was stated in a, in a microcosm to particular groups that need that information and their language, and to have the appropriate staff available to articulate to them in that way. We're not just one county that, that's thinking about this. There are already 17 cities that have adopted similar ordinances, five states, and I think that this is, we're on the right track here for L.A. County. And I know in the first district, it's going to matter a lot. According to DCBA, last year roughly 10,200 households were served with unlawful detainees and knowing that about 90% of the tenants face unlawful detainees without representation. This program can potentially help up to 9,000 individuals. And in East L.A., since 2020, nearly 4,000 residents have benefited or participated in tenant protections. So we know that the need is there, and we need to continue to do everything we can that we're capable of to seek other sources of funding and also making that a priority with the Board and our budget. So I am wholeheartedly in support of this. Thank you Supervisor Mitchell. Thank you to all the tenants groups that are out there and all the people that are listening us today. Let's move forward and make it a great day. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Han.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you Supervisor Mitchell for bringing this forward so that we have an opportunity to express our support of this. As has been said by many of my colleagues, we're certainly still in a homelessness crisis, and we hear over and over from the experts that people are falling into homelessness faster than we can get people off the streets and into housing. So we need to stem the tide and focus on prevention. We've been hearing that almost every year since Measure H was enacted, and we actually made some changes in how those dollars are spent to focus more on prevention. And we certainly have to use every strategy as at our disposal. And I've said, we need to throw out what's not working and double down on what is working. And this, keeping people where they are currently housed is a strategy that is working and we should double down on. And that sometimes means providing people emergency rent subsidies if they're at risk of losing their housing, but it also means putting in place common sense regulations to prevent people from being kicked out of their homes unjustly. But even with those rules in place, tenants often find themselves in a tough place because they cannot afford legal representation and their landlords often can. And I see this ordinance as a way of leveling the playing field. It's not going to prevent evictions altogether. There are completely lawful and just reasons why some tenants are evicted, but it's going to make sure, I think, that tenants have legal representation they need if they're faced with an unjust or unreasonable eviction notice. Our Department of Consumer and Business Affairs has already been offering legal counsel to tenants in unincorporated area for some time now. And even the city of Long Beach has contracted with our department to offer this service to their residents. And so far, this strategy has been impressively effective. About 49% of tenants that receive legal assistance remain in their homes, and an additional 48% are able to avoid homelessness. This program has given us a chance as a county to step in and help a tenant that is in trouble. I'm happy to support this. I hope more cities in our county will also pursue similar strategies. Every time we do things, we only have complete authority in our unincorporated county, but when we have a good idea and we have a good strategy, we do hope that some of the other 88 cities will adopt it, follow suit, and see this as also a model to help. You know, one of the things I was just going to ask, because I know when we talk about leveling the, the playing field, I, I have heard from some mom-and-pop landlords who feel like now, you know, why don't, why aren't they guaranteed legal representation? And I know we offer something to landlords in the form of mediation. Can you elaborate a little bit on that Rafael?
Yeah, thank you for that Supervisor. DCBA has been upgrading a mediation program since 1986 and has been super effective and has always been available both within the courts and in the community. Over the last two years, we mediated about 1,000 unlawful detainees through that program alone, but the majority of the program, the majority of the cases that go through our Stay Housed were actually mediated out, they're negotiated out, resulting in these positive outcomes. On top of that, the beauty of our program too is that we do offer rental assistance within the program. So a lot of that negotiation is negotiated with money in hand as well, makes those negotiations a lot easier and, and helping make sure that folks stay housed or find an alternative location to where, where they're currently housed.
Because, I mean, it's always, it's an equation, right? You have to have landlords to have tenants and, you know, tenants have to have landlords to be housed. There's always two sides to every story.
Absolutely.
Do you think our landlords are as aware of this help as they could be?
We were hoping that they are. I think one of the things that we could point out is that 88% of landlords show up with attorneys at unlawful detainer hearings. So a lot of times, they're going straight to the attorney versus looking to take advantage of mediation. And I think in partnership with DEO, as we start rolling out more and more programs to support our small business landlords, we'll make sure that there's awareness around that and even on our own, we continue to advocate for that program and put that information out.
Thank you. I, I, I hope we, we can do as good a job as possible in alerting our landlords of this available mediation from our department. I plan to support this. I think this is the right move for us as a county, just trying to bring everybody together on both sides of this housing equation. Thank you.
Thank you. So much has been said, and I just want to start with gratitude for my colleagues Supervisor Mitchell and Supervisor Solis for initiating this work. I'm thrilled to see it coming forward, and I am thrilled to see so many people who have joined us here today, who I know have been invested in making this outcome possible. So thank you for your advocacy and your hard work. We are in the midst of a housing and homelessness crisis, and the recent point in time count showed that the numbers are stabilizing, but we still face many challenges with so many people still falling into homelessness. The biggest challenge in our crisis is, is exactly that. How many people are continuing to lose the housing that they're already in? And countless more are on the verge. In 2023, there were more than 44,000 eviction cases filed in L.A. County courts, and this is while we are in a state of emergency on homelessness. I, I can't get over that number. This is more than half the number of people who are unhoused in L.A. County today, and the vast majority of those families did not have an attorney and likely knew little about the legal process or the remedies available to them. Without legal representation, it can be hard for a tenant to receive a fair and just outcome, even if the eviction was unlawful. Attorneys make a big difference. Even if a tenant isn't ultimately able to stay in their home, legal support can help a tenant negotiate a longer time to move out, reduce the amount of back owed rent, or settle cases to keep eviction records sealed or from being reported to credit agencies. These are important items that can impact someone's ability to get housing in the future. The ordinance before us makes permanent the critical work that our legal service providers and nonprofits are doing through Stay Housed L.A. It includes important notice provisions and remedies that provide tools to tenants to increase access to right to counsel and prevent homelessness. While this right to counsel ordinance will only apply in unincorporated areas, I know, as you can hear from my colleagues' comments... as you can hear from my colleagues' comments, it is our board's intent to work towards universal access to legal representation for all low-income tenants who may be facing eviction. And I encourage our incorporated cities to consider enacting their own right to counsel ordinances. I know the city of Los Angeles will soon be doing that, and others are considering it too, and we want them to work with the county and our Department of Business and Consumer Affairs to expand the work of StayHoused L.A. This board has made homelessness prevention a priority, so please know you have willing partners here on the board to work with you to ensure that we keep more Angelinos housed. I also want to thank DCBA and County Council for drafting the ordinance, and DCBA for your continued efforts on behalf of L.A. County renters. I know that there are many people out there who now know that since they have this resource, they have somebody who's on their side, where they can safely have a conversation about their housing insecurity and what their available options are. So many times, that security alone allows you to get to a better outcome. And I appreciate that those who own property will have questions about the availability, and I'm glad that you mentioned the mediation program. But I've yet to meet a property owner where I've lived and rented who wasn't in some way, shape, or form represented by legal counsel, who had prepared documents, who had, that I had to sign as a leaseholder, that I... There's a lot of advice, maybe not on a case-by-case basis, but there's a lot of legal representation that goes into standing up a business. And I think making sure that those who are just looking to be housed understand what their rights are legally when they enter into that agreement is incredibly important. It is important for families who are trying to keep their children safe. It is important for our transition-age youth who are transitioning out of the protection of the county and onto their own, and making some of these decisions on their own, in some cases for the first time. And they deserve to know that we will be there to support them, that they have resources available to them, and that they will be supported as they're moving into these different stages. You know, we have to do better in order for us to turn this homelessness crisis around, and this is a critical component to doing exactly that. So I also want to thank our StayHoused L.A. partners, legal service providers, and community organizations, as well as tenants who have come here today and many other days over the past years to share your experiences and to advocate for this monumentally important right. Thank you very much for your advocacy. I know you're going to be very excited when you come to testify, but I hope that if you are supportive of comments that you're hearing, that you will indicate by doing this. If you don't like comments you're hearing, you can thumbs down, but we want to make sure that we keep moving through public comments so we're not talking or shouting or, you know, saying things out loud while others are speaking, despite what our agreement may be for things that we hear. So with that, Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who have signed up to speak on these items.
Well, the following individuals, please come forward. Alejandra Gonzalez, Anna Carrion, Angela Bertsong, Antonio Hernandez, Asiel Robledo, Barbara Schultz, Camarina Perez, Carmen Ortiz, Cynthia Gonzalez, Dalvin Henriquez, Gloria Sagastum, Gloria Castaneda, Dion Turner, Gloria Machorro, Gloria Rubio, Emilio Matamoros, Jose Hernandez, Monica de los Santos, Rosa Creal, Veronica Loris, Vicente Valdez, Eva Garcia, Raffia Lopez, Patricia Sosa, Eva Garcia, Sofia Mendoza, Leah Behar, and Maria Marc Ramirez, please come forward, and staff will assist you. As a final reminder for participants on the telephone, if you would like to address item numbers four and six, if you have not already done so, please press 1 and 0 now to be placed in the speaking queue. Moderator, when we have the first remote speaker, please.
Our first participant is Mandy Manji. Please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin. One moment, there's an error. Okay, we've got it fixed. You may begin. Go ahead, please.
Okay, I'm great, thank you.
Are you there?
Hello, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, hi. My name is Masi Manji. I'm with Inner City Law Center, and we're speaking items four, six, and 14. We're here to support the Right to Counsel. We represent folks who are homeless and that folks are at risk of homelessness throughout L.A. County, and, you know, this is the first year we've seen in many years that homelessness has declined throughout the county. This is only because of our efforts, efforts of the county and the city to build affordable housing and to keep tenants housed. We do the Right to Counsel, a very important staff that will allow folks to stay in their homes and to prevent eviction, prevent homelessness, and ensure greater stability for all tenants throughout L.A. County. This is a really important issue for black and brown people, for low-income folks. We're seeing consistently that landlords have representation and tenants do not. This is going to equal the playing field and allow everybody to...
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Janet Canyon. Please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin. Janet, go ahead, your line's open.
Janet, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Janet Agnan, Agla. According to the DCBA report, the county does not have the funding for an expansion beyond the first year. Merely hoping for Measure A to pass is financially reckless. StayHoused L.A. still has provided only a handful of examples of unlawful evictions. Instead, their data clearly shows that 80% of all evictions are simply due to non-payment of rent. The current funding for this program is five times the amount for attorney fees as it is for rental assistance. Those amounts should be reversed. We urge the Board of Supervisors to delay the vote on this ordinance until a permanent funding source has been established. At a minimum, any expansion of StayHoused L.A. should be strictly limited to currently available funding for fiscal year '24 through '25 only. When permanent funding is identified, we urge the county to use the funds to pay the rent for low-income renters to completely avoid eviction rather than attorney fees to merely delay eviction. Thank you.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Andrea McPherson. Please unmute, speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Speaking on behalf of four and six, so please, I would ask you guys to give me two minutes. Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Andrea McPherson, former chair of DMH, Mental Health Stakeholders, and the stakeholders of Delakeer, the largest public insurance company in the nation, please better Los Angeles County and their way of life. We are struggling with the unethical practices of apartment management and property owners. I'm in favor of this motion for residents' right to counsel because I believe our own rights regarding consumer protection, tenant regulations, and the upkeep of properties need to be investigated accordingly and regulated preventing homelessness. There should be an accountability code that the Board of Supervisors execute that manages any illegal practices, any ADA violations, and any form of abuse from all properties with no consumer regulations, including those who take advantage of seniors and the disabled with money laundering. This happens so often, it is now offensive to ask for better service and...
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Roy Humphreys. Please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Okay, and thank you for Supervisor Mitchell and Solis throwing in the race card there and realizing that 49% of the population of Los Angeles County is Hispanic, and Mitchell's aspect about the felony on blacks, you need to talk to Dr. Thomas Sewell. You're a shameful person, and the idea that you're wanting to take taxpayers' money to fund this situation is abominable, and that persons have always had the right to counsel. And as far as equity goes, you can forget about it. The only way you're going to get equity is to have public housing, and that is a huge, and that would be the project that you need to be focused on and get into the world of reality on this particular situation. And instead of, and equity, forget about it. It's never going to exist. You haven't gotten, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul and funding illegal aliens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Nina Anthony. Please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hello, I was hoping to make comment on the general comments, please.
Okay, we can have you in queue for general public comment. We'll go to the next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Our next participant is Eric Previn. Please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Thank you. And, you know, eviction is terrible. 44,000 is shocking, but the idea of getting this money together and helping to pay the rent was a good idea as opposed to these attorneys. Now, I like attorneys, but the system is rigged, and if we're going to be coming up with public money, the best thing that an attorney can do for a tenant who's being evicted is not always a good and ethical thing, and the mom and pop across the table knows it. But we haven't really exactly specified, so I just think that this is, we should not be prioritizing legal resources in this way. We should be trying to protect people, yes, and there are some standards that can't be, you know, you can't throw people out for just any reason, but it is very, very complicated. And as for Measure A, I don't know, but I'm very surprised that Supervisor Mitchell's okay with one-time funding because we all remember as she's climbing Priority Mountain, I mean, this is not a funded program. So we did have a pandemic and an emergency, but we have an ongoing emergency. So I would say, thank you for doing something.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers in queue to address the board.
Thank you. We'll now turn to speakers in person. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Angela Bertsong. I am a housing organizer for Los Angeles Community Action Network, also known as LA Can. I live in Supervisor District Two. I also am a landlord in Supervisor District Two, and I work in Supervisor District One. I want to thank Supervisor Mitchell for your leadership, as well as Supervisors Solis and Horvath for supporting and introducing the motion to establish a right to counsel. I support a right to counsel for struggling renters because I have seen what happens when a tenant does not understand the eviction process. There was a young man, he resides in Skid Row, who has cognitive challenges and was facing a notice to vacate. His mother and his new caseworker brought him to LA Can for a legal clinic, looking for answers in order for him to remain housed. One of the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles attorneys was able to call off the deputies. He is still housed to this day. We support this. We ask the board to vote yes on the right to counsel ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Anna Carrion.
Good morning, my name is Anna Carrion.
Soy representante y miembro de Sage.
I'm a representative and member of Sage.
Represento el área de la señora Holly Mitchell.
I represent the area of Ms. Holly Mitchell.
Y estoy aquí para darles mi gratitud y mi alegría de que ustedes estén apoyando esta resolución para los inquilinos. Es bien importante que los inquilinos sean representados por la representación legal.
And I'm here to thank you and to also share my happiness of your support for this resolution. It is so important that our tenants are represented legally and are able to have those rights.
Esto va a poner a las familias residentes de Los Ángeles en seguridad.
This will give the families and residents of Los Angeles, they'll give them security.
Y recuerden que también nosotros somos trabajadores. Somos la clase laboral trabajadora que necesitamos esta facilidad de los rendatarios.
And remember that we're also workers. We're that middle class that's working, and we also need that representation and to have that in order for us to fight against these owners.
Invito a la señora Janice Han, la presidenta, y a la señora Carrie Barker, a que se suman a votar a favor de esta resolución para beneficio de los residentes de Los Ángeles y del condado.
And I ask Ms. Janice Han, the president, and also Ms. Barker, to vote yes so that we are able to approve this resolution.
Gracias.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, good morning. My name is Barbara Schultz. I'm the Director of Housing Justice at Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles and StayHoused L.A. I want to thank Supervisors Mitchell and Solis for your leadership and for all the supervisors for supporting this. Also, of course, I want to thank our good partners at DCBA. I think that you all made pretty much every point I would have made, so thank you for that, and I just want to let you know that StayHoused L.A. and DCBA are in constant discussions on how to improve StayHoused L.A., improve our effectiveness, our efficiency, but we also have been talking about potential future policy issues that could lower the number of filings, because that's what we need to do next. We need to lower the number of eviction filings and then have a right to counsel. So thank you very much. This is a great day for the county of L.A.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Asael Robledo.
Good morning, my name is Asael Robledo.
Y les quiero dar las gracias por estar a favor del punto cuatro y seis.
And I want to thank you for being in favor of four and six.
Porque al ser parte de una minoría me hace más vulnerable a terminar en las calles por no saber navegar el sistema en una corte.
Because by being minority, that also allows for me to have even more of that opportunity to end up in the streets because I don't know how to navigate the system.
En especialmente cuando hay algún familiar rehabilitado o a veces no nos quieren rentar porque yo lo he vivido en carne propia de que dicen, oh, no le rentamos a personas que están bajo servicios sociales.
Especially when we have anyone with disabilities. I've lived it where they don't want to rent to us, or they say, oh, we are not renting to someone with disabilities or who is using the social services.
Por eso estoy muy agradecido por este punto que estén a favor.
So that's why I'm so thankful that you're in favor of this point.
Para no pasemos ilegalidades, abusos de los dueños de edificios.
So that we're not suffering these abuses or illegalities from these owners of these buildings.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, Board. My name is Dion Turner, public policy advocate with Inner City Law Center. I want to thank Supervisor Mitchell for your leadership, as well as Supervisors Solis and Horvath for introducing the motion to establish a right to counsel. This has been a culmination of years of advocacy and hard work, and we're so glad to finally be here and celebrate this moment with the entire county of L.A. Inner City Law Center strongly supports a right to counsel ordinance. No one should ever be evicted without legal representation. This is about racial and economic justice. The majority of tenants facing evictions are black and brown. Right to counsel programs have proven to shown and improve racial justice outcomes through the eviction system and begin to provide stability for our lower-income tenants throughout the county. This ordinance keeps precariously housed families from falling into homelessness. While we're ecstatic to support this version of a right to counsel ordinance, we look forward to continue working with the board to eventually establish universal and perpetual access to legal representation all throughout the county. We're so excited for today, and thank you all again for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es José Hernández. Vengo del Distrito Dos, apoyando al derecho codificado a un abogado que nos represente.
Good morning, my name is José Hernández. I come from District Two, and I am here to support that codified right to have legal representation.
Queremos pedir que paren los desalojos exprés y den a nuestra gente la seguridad de vivir dignamente.
We want to ask that they stop those express evictions and to give our people that security that they deserve.
Y no la angustia de vivir en las calles como muchas familias viven.
And not to worry that we're going to live in the streets like many other families are doing so.
Pido a nuestros representantes, trabajen a favor de los más necesitados.
I ask that our representatives please work in favor of those that need it most.
Gracias por escucharme.
Thank you for listening to me.
Quisiera agregar algo. No sé si sea más factible pagar a las grandes corporaciones por limpiar las calles que cubrir a los más necesitados de vivienda.
And I wanted to add something. I don't know if it makes sense to pay these huge corporations to come out and clean our streets or just to help us, those that need it, and we will be living in a better place.
Porque hay personas que en un día ganan un salario exorbitante y hay personas que viven sin... viven sin probar un bocado de comida porque están preocupados por su vivienda.
There are people that in one day they make a lumpsome amount of money, and there are others that can't even eat because they're suffering or they don't have a place to be.
Porque ya que, yo ya viví la angustia de pasar por algo parecido, por un desalojo.
I've already lived that worry of going through something as such as an eviction.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Muy buenos dias, mi nombre es Eva García, organizadora de inquilinos de Colectivo Poder Comunitario en el Este de Los Ángeles.
Hello, good morning, my name is Anna García, and I am, Eva García, interpreter, made a correction. I, my name is Eva García, and I come from the Collective Power, Community Power Collective, and I'm also an organizer.
Quiero agradecer que hayan aceptado para apoyar a los abogados, a los inquilinos con abogados gratuitos, a la supervisora Solis y a todos los que están apoyando, o supervisores. Quiero dar gracias, pero también quiero rectificar que no es suficiente para lo que estamos viviendo actualmente con nuestros inquilinos. Hay áreas.
I want to thank, I want to thank Supervisor Solis, I want to thank all the supervisors that are in support to have that legal representation. But I also want to add that it isn't enough, what we're going through, what these people are going through.
Actualmente, un abogado sí es útil, pero no al 100%.
A lawyer, he's functional, yes, but not 110%.
Tenemos áreas donde nuestros inquilinos no tienen ninguna protección.
We have areas where our tenants have no protections.
Y los llevan a corte.
And they take them to the courts.
Y yo les digo a los inquilinos, tenemos que luchar siquiera para darle laata al dueño y respeta su hogar.
And I tell these tenants, we have to fight, and we have to fight against these owners and to be able to have our rights.
Y aún teniendo un abogado, pierden su hogar porque no hay protecciones.
And even while having a lawyer, they lose their home because they don't have any protections.
Yo quiero pedir que creen unas leyes donde nuestros inquilinos todos tengan protecciones.
I want to ask to create laws where our tenants all have protections.
Porque es injusto que uno sí y otros no.
Because it is unfair, that one yes and the other no.
Y aún los que tienen, no se llevan a cabo las leyes, los tratan de desalojar aún así.
And even those that have those protections, the laws aren't protected, they still try to evict them.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I am Emmanuel. I'm a tenant in SD One and also a tenant consultant for Eastside Leeds and Stay Housed L.A. in the east side of L.A. There is a lot of, yeah, I mean, I kind of do agree with our last speaker in a lot of different aspects. I think a lawyer is definitely is a necessity, though, to be able to enforce most of those laws that are already in place, as, you know, tenants do try and it's unsuccessful because of the lack of enforcement, which is only to be done through an attorney, through mostly court. So that being said as well, yeah, it's pretty true that there isn't any protections for other tenants outside of some areas, but I'm sure maybe eventually you will see that that's the truth and continue to work on those. Nonetheless, please pass, you know, the right to an attorney. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hola, buenos dias, mi nombre es Gloria Castañeda.
Hello, good morning, my name is Gloria Castañeda.
Madre de cinco hijos. He pasado por desalojos y me alegra que apoyen la medida, no más desalojos, repentimos, y que eventualmente todo le va a regresar a manos de los mismos dueños, pero ese no es tan...
Mother of five children, and I have suffered eviction. I have gone through that, and so I support this new ordinance that we have none of those immediate evictions orders. And these, the tenants, we're going through so much, the families have gone through so much.
Y pertenezco también a, al área de CPC y venimos del área de Boyle Heights.
I also belong to CPC and we come from the Boyle Heights area.
Y esto no es suficiente, todos saben que ayudarían a las familias y esto va a retribuir globalmente hablando en recursos comunitarios.
And this isn't enough, yes, it'll help some families, but globally, we also need to think about those resources, those community resources.
Apoyando a las familias para que esto no siga avanzando, tanto desalojos y mucho más, mentalmente, emocionalmente van a ayudar demasiado.
And to support the families, and a lot of these people will benefit, and also they won't be suffering anymore from mental or emotional issues.
Hay demasiado que hacer como comunidad, y gracias a los que apoyaron a la medida. Necesitarían llevar a su gente, investigar más acerca de por qué estamos pidiendo hacer esos recursos, que no es suficiente, pero pueden hacer un poquito más cada día.
There's still much to do as a community, and I invite all of those that are supporting it to go in and investigate, just to see why we're requesting these resources, so that you're aware of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Alejandra González.
Good morning, my name is Alejandra González.
Y vengo a agradecerle a la supervisora Hilda Solis y Michelle.
I am here to thank Supervisor Eva Solis and Mitchell.
Por el apoyo tan grande que nos han brindado. Perdón, vengo del, este, de Los Ángeles.
For that great support that you have supported us with, and I'm sorry, I come from East Los Angeles.
Y realmente estamos agradecidos por este gran apoyo, pero también hay que darnos cuenta que hay otros condados que necesitan de su apoyo. Es a lo que les vengo a pedir y a darles las gracias por apoyarnos a nosotros también.
And we are very thankful for this support, but also to bring light that there's other counties that also require this support. Yes, we're grateful, we're thankful that other places also need it.
No queremos más personas en las calles que estén pasando por fríos.
We don't want any more people in the streets to be suffering from cold, the cold.
Y muchas gracias a todos ustedes.
And thank you so much to each one of you.
Thank you. We're going to call more names.
Will the following additional individuals please come forward? Dominga Solozano, Dr. Critical Truth Bay, Esmeralda Negrete, Grace Estera, Heidi Gonzalez, Hilary Cruz, Irma Salvantes, Jocelyn Medina, Jasmine Perez, Jason Mercado, Jessica Preto, Jesús Rojas, Jill Collins, Joshua Frita, Karen Ramirez, Kyle Nielsen, Lily Pierda, Merana Luna, Myra Garcia Cortez, Natasha Smith, Pamela Agustin, Rafael Menendez, Red Chief Hunt, S. Moore, Sharon Buckley, Taina Ramon, Veronica Estevez, and Pancake, please come forward and step forward a little bit.
Hi, can we start? Okay, thank you. Hi, good afternoon or good day, everyone. My name is Santi Gonzalez. I am a tenant organizer in the East L.A. area under Supervisor Solis. I first want to thank the supervisors, Supervisor Mitchell for your leadership, as well as Supervisor Solis and Horvath for supporting and introducing the motion to establish a right to counsel. And you're all here a lot today from a lot of different tenants, tenant advocates, organizers, leaders, that have been working with this ordinance for a while now, on the importance of why we need right to counsel established. When we think about, right, as to how is it that we're going to defeat or beat a lot of the homelessness happening, it's right here, right now, in this moment, with passing ordinances and strong protections that ensure that tenants are able to stay housed. So I really appreciate everyone here today being able to pass this ordinance because it will really make a change in ensuring that tenants have protection.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Next speaker, please.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Camerina Pérez. Vengo del Este de Los Ángeles.
Hello, good morning, my name is Camerina Pérez, and I come from East Los Angeles.
Apoyo firmemente la ordenanza sobre el derecho de un abogado.
I support firmly that ordinance to have a right to a lawyer.
Yo estoy pasando actualmente por un desalojo y es muy angustiante no tener el apoyo de un abogado porque sientes que todo está destruido.
I'm currently going through the process of eviction, and it is very worrisome to not have that support from a lawyer because it is just so stressful.
Acaban de comprar la casa donde vivo, un inversionista, y yo pago ochocientos y ahorita él quiere que pague yo tres mil dólares.
An investor just purchased a home that I'm living, that I'm currently living in, and I paid eight hundred dollars, but now they want me to pay three thousand dollars.
Por favor, si ustedes tienen el poder, necesitamos su asistencia legal, necesitamos más abogados, porque mucha gente desconoce que existe este apoyo, y gracias, que si ustedes pudieran apoyar esto, pues nos beneficiaría mucho.
Please, if you have the power, please go ahead. We need more lawyers, we need more representation, and if you can do that, please just do that for us because we need to have that, that right for ourselves.
Gracias.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Patricia Sosa. Vengo del Este de Los Ángeles. Le doy gracias a Hilda Solis y a Michelle por lo que está apoyando para los abogados porque yo estoy pasando un estrés.
Hello, good morning, my name is Patricia Sosa. I am thankful to Hilda Solis and Mitchell for supporting this with the lawyers because I'm going through stress.
Con el dueño de la casa porque nos quiere sacar, llevo más de veinte años, y a consecuencia de eso, hace un mes y medio me dio parálisis parcial. Por eso les doy gracias por lo que están apoyando con los abogados.
The homeowner, the homeowner from this home, I've been there for twenty years, and that's what's happening due to that and the stress, I had that partial paralysis. So I'm thankful to those that are supporting this ordinance. I am grateful for that.
Yo soy madre soltera y ahorita no estoy trabajando porque estoy pasando una serie de problemas médicos y en eso no he podido ahorita agarrar trabajo.
I am a single mother, and I haven't been able to work due to the fact that I'm going through medical issues, there's a series of things, and I haven't been able to obtain a job.
Es todo y les doy muchas gracias por el apoyo de los abogados.
That's it, and thank you very much for supporting us with the lawyers.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Jocelyn Medina, and I'm currently interning actually with Sage in addition to Supervisor Solis's East L.A. office. And I wanted to thank, first of all, Supervisor Holly Mitchell for introducing the motion and for Hilda Solis, Supervisor Solis, for supporting the motion, as well as other supervisors that have supported this right to counsel ordinance. I've been, I grew up in Echo Park, I'm part of Supervisor District One, and I'm also, I also come from a single-parent limited income household, and I've been, we've been renters for my entire life, and I just wanted to come and speak and support this right to counsel ordinance. As mentioned, ninety percent of the time tenants come into eviction courts without any legal representation, and because of that, that is something, you know, discourages many tenants when being able to come into this representation knowing, and has, gives them no hope, knowing that they have to enter into these spaces without that representation. And because of that, I think it's so important that we have...
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hola, buenos dias, mi nombre es Esmeralda Negrete, soy de CPC del Este de Los Ángeles.
Hello, good morning, my name is Esmeralda Negrete, and I am from CPC, from East Los Angeles.
Pues aquí como todos mis compañeros, pidiéndoles su apoyo para que aprueben esta ley de que todos los inquilinos tengamos derecho a un abogado.
Just here with all of my fellow sisters and brothers to have that support so that we can have that legal representation and have a lawyer.
Yo pasé un desalojo hace poco. Gracias a Dios tuve el apoyo legal de un abogado, pero no todos. A veces contamos con ese apoyo legal.
I just went through an eviction recently, and I had the support of a lawyer, but not all of us have that support of a lawyer.
Yo pienso que con el apoyo de ustedes y de la comunidad podemos lograr esto. Muchísimas gracias a todos.
I think that with your support and with the community's support, we can achieve it. Thank you so much to each one of you.
Thank you. While we welcome our next speaker, if we could make sure that all of our phones are silenced, that would be helpful. Please go ahead.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Carmen Ortiz. Vivo en el Este de Los Ángeles. Vengo en esta mañana para exponer mi caso. Soy una persona incapacitada, soy de la tercera edad, y estoy siendo desalojada. Me han dado para el siete de julio para que yo dejara la casa. Me subieron la renta.
Good morning, my name is Carmen Ortiz, and I come from East L.A., and I am here to express my story. So I am a person with disabilities, and I am also a senior citizen. And also, I am being evicted, they're giving me up till July seventh to leave this home.
Me subieron la renta a mil cuatrocientos cincuenta.
They raised my rent to one thousand four hundred and fifty.
Para pagar dos mil dólares el día siete de julio.
And now I have to pay two thousand dollars July seventh.
Mi situación es muy, es muy triste porque no tengo a dónde ir. Mi seguro social, lo que me mandan, no es suficiente, y la mera verdad, no sé a dónde voy a ir. Tengo tres hijos, pero en el lugar que ellos viven, no, no, no hay lugar para mí.
And my situation is extremely sad, I have nowhere to go. My social security isn't enough, so I have three sons, but their spaces aren't large enough for me to go there.
Y ahorita, en este, en este momento, en mi casa, te estoy teniendo dos personas que no tienen hogar, por la razón que también han sido desalojados, los vengo a representar también a ellos y a muchos más que han estado desalojándose, y es, no es, no es justo. Yo creo que las casas que, donde vivimos, podemos todavía estar ahí.
And right now, currently in my home, I have two people that also don't have a place to stay because they went through evictions, and so I'm here also representing them, and I just don't think it's fair. We need to have a place your home, we should be able to stay in the homes we're in.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we welcome our next speaker, I just also want to indicate, we do have staff up in the corner, our constituent assistance team, they are available to talk with you about ongoing issues, to provide any sort of assistance that, for an issue that's happening right now, but please go ahead and continue providing public comment on this, on these items.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, Rafael, do you have staff in the audience that can speak to those that need immediate assistance and maybe call them aside and do that?
We have staff that speaks Spanish and English as well.
Where are they? Can they stand and be recognized? DCBA staff? So can you explain? Si necesitan haber alguien del Departamento de Consumidores, pueden ir ahorita para hablar con la señorita que está sentada ahí. Can she stand again and be noticed so people know? Y pueden hablar con ella si tienen una, you know, problema ahorita. Gracias, okay?
And we have Michelle out in the audience as well, in the white coat.
Yep, okay, Michelle, thank you.
Please go ahead.
Buenos días, mi nombre es Sofía Mendoza, soy miembro de ACE.
Hello, good morning, my name is Sofía Mendoza, and I am a member of ACE.
Quiero agradecerles a los supervisores por apoyar esta ordenanza, derecho a un abogado.
I want to thank the supervisors for supporting this ordinance to have the right to counsel.
Es importante si tener esa, ese apoyo del abogado porque yo estoy pasando por un desalojo.
It's important to have the support of a lawyer because I am going through an eviction.
Sí, y me ha ayudado bastante que no me ha dejado a quedarme en la calle.
And it has helped me a lot that I haven't been left out in the streets.
Sí, por eso es importante que estén todos los condados también.
And that's why it's important that it is also in all the other counties as well.
Para que la demás personas no se queden en la calle, ya que hay mucha gente ahorita en la calle.
So that the rest of the people aren't left out in the streets now that we have so many people out in the streets.
Sí, y también es importante por la manera de que muchos niños también viven en la calle porque yo los he mirado.
And it's also important because there's so many kids in the streets, I've seen them.
Sí, entonces, para mí, es importante... Sí, entonces para mí es importante que todos tengamos derecho a una vivienda.
For me, it's extremely important that all of us have the right to a home.
La vivienda es un derecho humano.
Having a home is a human right.
Y gracias a todos los supervisores por apoyar esta ordenanza.
And thank you to all the supervisors for supporting this ordinance. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Chanel Moore and I am here today in support of the motion. I have extensive experience in working with kids and a lot of times in my experience I would indulge the kids in their activities, whether it was playing a board game or giving them fun with racing against them. A lot of times we know if we engage children in their activities, most of the time the outcome will be that we are the winner because we know already ahead of time that that child is not, most likely not intellectually are equal. And for me, most of the time they're not athletically my equal, just, just saying. I will agree with some of the callers who called in about, oh, I'm running out of time, called in about rent being due, but what if your rent's not due? Here's a letter from LEHD saying that the landlady should have rescinded the three-day notice. But I just didn't know the court rules and that's not fair because in that sense I was.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Sí, buenos días, me da gusto escuchar comentarios positivos acerca de esta propuesta de todos los concejales y que se encuentran aquí en este momento, supervisores.
Hello, good morning. It is wonderful to hear positive comments regarding this item and to all of the supervisors present as well.
Sí, yo soy, mi nombre es Vicente Primero Canada y vengo, vengo del Distrito Uno.
Before anything, my name is Vicente and I come from District One.
Y como les repetí hace rato, la verdad que estoy muy agradecido porque toman en cuenta estas propuestas que son necesarias para nuestra comunidad, nuestra gente.
And like I mentioned, I am grateful that you're taking in consideration these types of proposals that will help our community, our people.
Me da gusto saber que todavía hay gente de corazón honesto.
It's a pleasure to know that there are still people with that honest heart.
Mi creador los bendiga ahora y siempre, gracias.
May my creator bless you today and forever. Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hola, buenos días, mi nombre es María Ramírez y soy una orgullosa estudiante del Programa de Empoderamiento de Inquilinos de EDN.
Hello, good morning. My name is María Orguino and I am a proud student of the program from EDN.
Estoy aquí para darle las gracias a todos los que están a favor del Código Cuatro y Seis.
I am here to thank everyone who is in favor of Item Four and Six.
Estoy muy orgullosa de que existan organizaciones que nos preparan para ir a un jurar, pararnos en una corte enfrente de un jurado y con dueños.
I am so proud that there are organizations that prep us to go and stand in front of a jury in a court setting.
He mirado como la organizadora, la principal que es la abogada Elena Pop de esa organización de EDN como empodera a sus estudiantes.
I have seen how the organizer, the lawyer Elena Pop, and how they give them and they empower their students.
Y he mirado también como ella se pelea en la corte con los abogados de los dueños que nos tratan a nosotros como mal y piensan que estamos con miedo pero gracias a ella vamos bien preparados para defendernos.
And I have seen her fight against these lawyers, the owners' lawyers, that they think that we're gonna fear and all that, but thankfully to her, we feel empowered and she fights for us.
Son muchas gracias a todos y esperemos tener más abogados con el corazón como Elena Pop.
Thank you everyone and we do hope to have more lawyers like with a heart like Elena Pop. Thank you. Next speaker.
Buenos días, mi nombre es Rosa Curiel y soy miembro de CPC en el Este de Los Ángeles.
Hello, good morning. My name is Rosa Curiel and I'm a member of CPC in the East Los Angeles area.
Quiero darles las gracias por haber apoyado esta, esta medida.
I want to thank you for supporting this measure.
Es importante que ninguna familia sea evictada sin tener representación legal.
It's important that no family be evicted without having legal representation.
Pero al mismo tiempo quiero enforzarlos a que continúen luchando por obtener más protecciones por los más desprotegidos.
At the same time, I want to keep and ask you to continue to support to have protections for those that are not protected.
Esto es apenas un comienzo, considero que todavía no es suficiente.
This is a start, I think it's still not enough.
Quizás en los próximos días cuando ustedes se levanten piensen qué más podemos hacer por las familias de color.
Maybe in the next few days when you wake up, you can think, what else can we do for the families of color?
Asegurémonos que los fondos de ULA sean usados propiamente en favor de la comunidad.
Let's make sure that the funds for ULA are used for the community.
Gracias.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Pamela and I live in District Five and work in District One. And I'm in support of Item Number Four. Evictions are violent because they impact a person's mental, emotional, and physical well-being supervisors, you've heard it today. Let's put aside the aggressive harassment that I witnessed when I respond to illegal lockouts. The actual halls of eviction court are places where common decency is often ignored by opposing counsel. I myself have been shoved by an attorney in the halls of the Pasadena courthouse by simply asking him for more time so that my tenant that we were supporting with Stay House could just wait for his interpreter. I have been threatened with arrest by sheriff in the halls of the court for simply reminding a tenant of their rights. If this is my experience as a trained community organizer, imagine the over thirty thousand tenants that go to eviction court without representation. A right to counsel bridges this access to justice gap. Please support it and thank you Supervisor, Police, and Horvath.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hola, buenos días, mi nombre es Mónica De Los Santos y pertenezco al Distrito Uno.
Hello, good morning. My name is Mónica De Los Santos and I am part of District One.
Agradezco a la supervisora Michelle por su liderazgo y también a la supervisora Solís y Horvath. Y estoy aquí porque, por la moción que apoyan la ordenanza para un abogado y para mí es representar a mi comunidad también porque soy inquilina y como inquilina he sufrido de acoso.
I, I am here to thank Supervisor Mitchell, Solís, and Horvath in support of this motion to have a right through a counsel. And I am a representative of the, of the community, I'm a tenant as well, and I have suffered through something similar and something like this.
Es este, sufrido de acoso por, en mi apartamento donde rento, ¿verdad? Y entonces es por eso que estoy aquí apoyando porque necesito que pase más leyes.
I have suffered harassment in the apartment that I rent and that is why I'm here in support because they feel that we need more laws.
Para que haya más protección como inquilino pues hay diferentes tipos de acoso tanto de los dueños de edificios como de los propios propietarios porque las rentas son muy elevadas.
I am here because we need more protections, more laws to protect us, also from the owners and also from the rents, the rents are going up really high.
Y nosotros no podemos luego agarrar un apartamento solos porque es muy caro lo que nos piden y los salarios son muy pocos y ellos nos piden el doble o el triple y son muchos requisitos de depósito que.
And we can't get an apartment by ourselves because the wages, they're very low and then they're asking us for two times, three times of what the rent would be. So it's, it's difficult. Thank you for the ordinance. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Buenos días, mi nombre es Delvin Enrique, es su nombre, Delvin Enriquez.
Good morning, my name is Delvin Enriquez.
Soy miembro de Sage y vengo del Sur de Los Ángeles.
I'm a member of Sage and I come from South LA.
Me dieron cita de desalojo y llevo el día y no tenía ni dinero ni un abogado.
They evicted me, they gave me a date to be evicted and I didn't have any lawyers, the date came and I had no lawyers, no representation or money.
Me presenté y antes de entrar a ver al juez el dueño estaba fuera y se estaba riendo de mí, me dijo que mi caso era la calle.
And I showed up and the owner was out there laughing and telling me that my case was in the streets.
Ya que no tenía abogado.
Since I didn't have a lawyer.
El juez le expliqué que no tenía dinero ni abogado y me dio tiempo para encontrarlo.
That I explained to the judge that I didn't have a lawyer, I didn't have money, and they gave me time to be able to find one.
Ya que no había suficientes abogados porque estaba el coronavirus y todos estaban ocupados, los pocos que habían.
And there wasn't enough lawyers because it was when the coronavirus was there and there was not enough lawyers, they were all busy.
Y me afectó mi salud tanto mental y mi cuerpo.
It affected my health mentally as well as physically.
Ahora estoy en la calle por dieciocho meses durmiendo en mi carro con mi familia y mi perro.
And now I'm in the streets for eighteen months sleeping in my car with my family and my dog.
Y vengo a esta sala para que por favor den representación de un abogado, es un derecho que nadie puede quitar.
And I am here today to ask for that representation to counsel, that is a right that cannot be taken away.
Y exijo que por favor pase la moción de representación legal porque.
And I am pleading that you please approve this motion of legal representation. Thank you. Thank you very much. And we do have staff available to assist right now. If you would like to speak with them, please go ahead. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Kyle Nelson. I'm a policy analyst at Sage and I'm a tenant living in District Three. Eviction courts make our dual housing affordability and homelessness crises worse. At court, most landlords have lawyers and most tenants do not. Tenants without lawyers lose their cases or accept disadvantageous settlements as they fight to defend their homes. A right to counsel ordinance is an important step that will help to balance this equation. Enacting this ordinance will provide outreach and awareness and legal representation for tenants facing eviction. A right to counsel will help tenants in unincorporated Los Angeles counties stay housed. By doing so, this vital ordinance will prevent more entrances into homelessness which will complement the county's existing efforts to help homeless experience people exit homelessness. I applaud Supervisors Mitchell, Solís, and Horvath for their ongoing support and urge all the supervisors to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hola, buenos días, mi nombre es Gloria Sagastume.
Hello, good morning. My name is Gloria Sagastume.
Y agradezco al, al Distrito número dos.
And I'm thankful to District Number Two.
Sí, la razón por la cual estoy aquí también porque estoy pasando momentos difíciles, no quiero llorar.
Is that I'm going through difficult times, I don't want to cry.
También tengo ese problema de, de vivienda, ¿verdad? Estoy buscando un trabajo, no lo puedo conseguir.
I'm having that same issue, homes, right, and I'm looking for work and I can't find work.
También tengo que quedarme en la calle, yo soy una mujer casi de cincuenta y un años y aún no consigo trabajo para pagar mi renta.
And I don't want to be in the streets, I'm almost fifty-one years old and I can't find work to be able to pay my rent.
Debo un mes de renta pero si en caso no consigo trabajo y no puedo pagar mi renta me van a echar a la calle y es lo que no quiero este quedarme en la calle, ¿verdad?, porque no sé dónde ir, soy una mujer sola aquí, no tengo hijos ni nada en este país.
I owe one month's rent.
Y no quisiera ir a la calle, ¿verdad?
And if I don't find work, I'm not gonna be able to pay it and they might, they will kick me out and I don't want to be in the streets. I don't have sons or children here in this country or any family.
Y sí pido también ayuda de un abogado que me represente, ¿verdad?, en caso de estos, esos tiempos críticos que estamos viviendo porque la verdad que la situación se ha puesto bastante difícil para mí porque soy una mujer indocumentada, no tengo papeles pero soy una inmigrante pero este, pero por eso ha conseguido algunos trabajos pero me piden papeles y por eso no me dan trabajo.
So I, that's why I'm here, I'm asking for a representation so that a lawyer can help me and also guide me, I'm a woman, I'm undocumented and it is difficult to work and to have any jobs, I get some here and there but they won't hire me because I don't have my documents. Thank you very much. And we do have assistance here if you'd like to speak with staff here at the county. We do have more than thirty speakers left. If someone has already said what you intended to say, please feel free to indicate that. But of course, we're here to hear all of you, so please go ahead.
Buenos días a todos, mi nombre es Gloria Machorro y vivo en el Sur-Centro de Los Ángeles.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Gloria Machorro and I live in the South LA area.
Yo les quiero pedir encarecidamente, volten a vernos a los más desprotegidos por los desalojos que nos están estresando y nos está afectando física, mental y emocionalmente.
I want to ask those that are in charge to look around you and to see those people that need and that are being affected mentally, emotionally, and physically with all of these evictions.
Necesitamos protección legal gratis.
We need legal protection that is free.
Para los de bajos recursos.
For those with low resources.
Les agradezco de antemano por todo lo que puedan hacer por nosotros, gracias.
I am thanking you in advance for anything that you are able to do for us. Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Dominga Sol Orzano.
Good afternoon, my name is Dominga Sol Orzano.
Sí, soy miembro de ACE.
I'm a member of ACE.
Soy del Distrito Nueve.
I'm from District Nine.
Y vengo aquí este, soy una persona de bajos recursos y madre de dos hijos.
I'm a law, I'm a person of low income and also a mother of two.
Y vengo aquí por favor a pedirles que, que como inquilinas nos den, nos den abogados gratis.
And I'm also here as a tenant to have free representation, legal representation of a lawyer.
Por favor, este, porque yo estoy viendo en la esquina de mi, de mi, casi de mi casa personas ya con familia en la calle y estoy muy preocupada que me pase eso también.
Please, because I'm seeing people like by the corner of my home, there's already families with children and I'm afraid that that could happen to me as well.
Muchas gracias, por favor, por favor también les pido que volten nos a mirar como personas de bajos recursos que tenemos este, todos los ánimos de trabajar, ¿verdad?, somos personas trabajadoras y ocupamos el apoyo de ustedes, por favor porque somos madres con hijos y de bajos recursos.
Please, please, look at us, we are low-income people, we need that help, we need the support and just, you know, we all are also mothers. So please, just, please, please, I ask that you support us.
Muchas gracias a todos los que nos escuchan aquí, por favor, gracias, pasen un buen día.
Thank you, thank you to all of you who are listening to us here and thank you so much and once again, please, and thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Clefira López, I'm a community organizer with Sage and I also am a tenant in ST Four in South Whittier. I'm here to speak about, right, some of the testimonies that we heard today, these are, as an organizer, these are stories that I hear on a weekly basis. And it's a distressful situation when I hear people with these stories sharing how they're scared of being evicted, they're scared of having their children on the streets and then giving them the answer, there's no lawyers, like there's no representation. Thankfully, we've had Stay House LA, right, which supports tenants in them knowing how to advocate for themselves. But even then, we know that tenants without legal representation have like a ninety, more than ninety-five percent chance of actually losing the right to counsel ordinance, it's a necessity in our county. And I think the supervisors that introduced this, Supervisor Solís, Horvath, and Supervisor Mitchell, thank you for, for doing this for our tenants and thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Lelia Bejar Banais.
Hello.
Estudiante de EDN.
Lelia Bejar from Banais, student of.
EDN.
EDN.
Agradezco a los supervisores y a todos los que apoyan las ordenanzas cuatro y seis.
I am thankful to the supervisors and all of those who support the Orders Four and Six.
Ahora no sé a dónde ir.
Now I don't know where to go.
Hice un trato, tengo que dejar mi hogar el tres de septiembre.
Hice un trato, tengo que dejar mi hogar el 3 de septiembre.
I made an agreement. I have to leave my home on September 3rd.
Tener un abogado hace una gran diferencia.
Having a lawyer makes a big difference.
Saber tus derechos a tiempo.
To know your rights with time.
Es agotador dar vueltas tratando de encontrar ayuda.
It's overwhelming making all these turns to try to find help.
Entendiendo a medias, sufriendo abusos y amenazas.
Understanding things halfway and suffering from abuse and harassment.
Acabas enfermo física y mentalmente.
You end up sick mentally and physically.
Necesitamos su apoyo para lograr justicia y igualdad.
We need your support to have justice and equality.
Se necesitan más abogados como Elena Pope.
We need more lawyers like Elena Pope.
Necesitamos ayuda.
We need help.
Necesitamos comprensión.
Understanding.
Necesitamos saber no seres humanos.
We need to also be seen as human beings.
Necesitamos de ustedes en este momento.
We need you in this time.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Gloria Rubio, pertenezco a Sage. Y yo también, como muchos, muchas de las personas que están aquí, me dio el dueño de la casa un papel que tengo que salirme en tres meses.
Hello, good morning. My name is Gloria Rubio. I am here representing Sage. And I myself, just like many people, the owner of the home that I'm in gave me a paper and I have to leave in three months.
Porque la casa la quiere vender y yo tengo 21 años viviendo allí en esa propiedad.
Because he wants to sell the home and I've been living there for 21 years.
Tengo dos hijos, un hijo con cáncer hace dos años. Estamos luchando por su vida.
I have two sons and one with cancer, and we've been fighting for his life for years.
Estoy desesperada. No sé a dónde irme, no sé qué voy a hacer. Las rentas están muy caras.
I'm desperate. I don't know where to go. I don't know what to do. Rent is expensive.
No tengo dinero para pagar un abogado.
I don't have money to pay a lawyer.
Estoy desesperada, pero le agradezco a los supervisores que están apoyándonos, a la supervisor Solis, a la supervisor Mitchell y a todos los que nos están apoyando para tener derecho a un abogado que nos ayude.
I, I, I'm desperate. I feel just hopeless. But I am thankful to Supervisor Solis, Supervisor Mitchell, to those that are supporting us in this, to have a lawyer.
Es muy desesperante no saber qué va a pasar mañana, a dónde me voy a ir.
It's overwhelming to know. I don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. Where am I going to go?
No sufre mentalmente, ya no duermo, solo pensar qué va a pasar con mis hijos.
I suffer mentally. I don't sleep just to thought, what's going to happen with my sons?
Eso es todo.
That's it. Thank you for being here.
Dios los bendiga.
God bless you. Next speaker, please.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Verónica Estévez.
Good morning. My name is Verónica Estévez.
Soy del Distrito Dos.
I'm from District Two.
Agradezco a todos los que apoyan.
I am grateful to all of those that are in support.
Y también invito a los que no apoyan la causa.
And I also invite those that are not supporting the cause.
A que se unan a nosotros.
To unite with us.
A lograr nuestras metas.
So that we can achieve our goals.
Realmente es muy importante para todos.
Truly is important for all of us.
Sobre todo las personas de bajos recursos.
Overall, those people with low income.
Que realmente sabemos que vamos día a día.
That truly know that we're living day to day.
A veces lidiamos con desempleo.
Sometimes we're dealing with unemployment.
Con desalojo.
Evictions.
Con problemas familiares.
With family problems.
Luto por perder un ser querido.
And also grieving for losing a loved one.
Todo al mismo tiempo.
All at once.
En mi caso llegué a pensar en el suicidio.
In my case, I even thought of suicide.
Gracias a Dios no pasó.
Thankfully, it didn't happen.
Yo me refugia en muchas organizaciones.
I depended on a lot of organizations.
Fui de una en una, en una.
I went from one to the other, to the other.
Hasta que logré un abogado.
Up until I was able to get a lawyer.
Y realmente es muy importante.
And truly is extremely important.
Saber que cuenta uno con alguien que te ayuda.
To know that you can count on someone that can help you.
En mi caso, mis niños ya no les daba tiempo.
In my case, I couldn't give my children time.
Solo pensaba en el problema.
I only thought about the problem.
Todos los días.
Every day.
Iba a la corte y miraba familias llorando, igual que yo.
I would go to the court and I would see families crying just like myself.
Y no es justo.
It's not fair. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hola, mi nombre es Hilaria Cruz. Soy miembra de ACE.
Hello, good morning. My name is Hilaria Cruz. I'm a member of ACE.
Y yo apoyo, ah, y yo apoyo el derecho a un abogado porque a la mayoría de nosotros necesitamos un abogado.
And I support the right to a lawyer because the majority of us need a lawyer.
Porque muchas veces tenemos, ah, o la mayoría de las veces, ah, tenemos, ah, que dejar nuestras casas y no tenemos apoyo de abogados y necesitamos la ayuda de ustedes y le quiero...
Because many times, the majority of the times, we, we can't leave our homes. We need to have that support and, and we need lawyers. We need representations.
Y le quiero dar las gracias a la, a Hilda Solis y a Mitchell.
And I want to thank Hilda Solis and Mitchell.
Por todo el apoyo y, por favor, necesitamos que las demás se apoyen, se unan a nuestro auxilio, por favor.
And for the support. And we also ask that the rest unite and come and help us and support us, please.
Necesitamos de su ayuda, por favor. Son bastantes familias que ya están en la calle. Por favor, no permitan que pase más eso.
We need your help. There's many families on the streets. Please, don't allow that. Don't allow that.
Por favor, gracias. Que Dios las bendiga a todas.
Please and thank you. And may God bless you all. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Mi nombre es Mayra García, organizadora de Libre Community Land Trust.
My name is Mayra García, organizer of Libre Community Land Trust.
Y en defensa de la comunidad con discapacidad.
And also defending the community with disabilities.
Por cierto, es una de las comunidades más castigadas.
As it is. It's one of the communities that gets most of the bad stuff.
Ya que no hay acomodaciones, en apartamentos para ellos.
Since there is no apartments or any places for them.
Esperamos que pase esta ordenanza de tener derecho a un abogado.
We do hope that they approve the ordinance to have the right to counsel.
Ya que yo tengo un hijo con discapacidad.
And I have a son with disabilities.
Y gracias a organizaciones como Libre.
And thank you to organizations like Libre.
Housing Long Beach.
Housing Long Beach.
Y los abogados.
And the lawyers.
Continuamos en nuestro apartamento.
We continued in our apartment.
Después de 23 años.
After 23 years.
Ya que recibimos una orden de desalojo injustificada.
We received an eviction notice that was not justified.
Violando todos nuestros derechos.
Breaking of all of our rights.
El dueño canceló mi forma de pago.
The owner canceled my form of payment.
Para poderme desalojar.
So that he can evict me.
Gracias a estos abogados y a estas organizaciones, continuamos en estos apartamentos.
Thankfully to these lawyers and the organizations, we continue in our apartment.
Pero hemos recibido muchas represalias por parte de, de los manejadores.
But we have received a lot of just lashback from these owners.
Es muy importante que tengamos abogados.
It's important that we have lawyers.
Y que la comunidad sea informada de sus derechos.
And that the community is also aware of their rights.
Y también luchamos mucho por la comunidad con discapacidad. Ocupamos mucho apoyo.
And let's fight, please, for that community with disabilities because we need a lot of support.
Gracias.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good day. My name is Rafaela Menendez, a mom of three. I'm a member of AC and a student of Eviction Defense Network. I live in the city of Huntington Park and here to express a bit my story. We got evicted twice. First was passing COVID and thanks to those protections for tenants, I didn't lose my home. Once the protection was removed, of course that will happen, right? The landlord would be smart and remove us from our home. Not just me, the whole unit and not just one building, like more than three, okay? Huntington Park, Bell, and some other cities, the same landlord. So, of course, this time I will need the help of finding a legal representation or to get to know a bit better my, my rights and how to defend myself and dealing with all this and against with abusive landlord who will harass.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Lily Piedra. I'm a tenant in District Four and also an organizer with Long Beach Residents Empowered. I want to thank the board for supporting this motion. Last summer, Long Beach successfully allocated one-time funds for a right-to-counsel program. The program has increased access to education, education and legal representation. But with 50,000 evictions countywide just last year, we need more resources toward, to work toward equitable access. Houselessness, as we have heard, is a constant threat in the lives of the working class and facing an eviction can be terrifying, isolating, and overwhelming. For many people in our community, an eviction is their first interaction with the court and legal institutions, navigating this unknown landscape when one of your fundamental needs is at stake, is beyond challenging. Given all this, I strongly support this right-to-counsel ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hola, mi nombre es Yomara Barrera. Soy un inquilino y vivo en el distrito de supervisor número uno.
Hello, my name is Yomara Barrera. I am a tenant and I live in the supervisor district one.
Quiero agradecer a la supervisor Michelle por su apoyo, liderazgo, y también a supervisor Solis.
I want to thank Supervisor Mitchell for your leadership and for your support and also Supervisor Solis.
Harvard por apoyar y presentar las mociónes para establecer una ordenanza sobre el derecho a un abogado.
And Horvath for supporting and also presenting these ordinances for having the right to counsel.
Apoyo firmemente una ordenanza sobre el derecho a un abogado.
I support firmly the right to counsel.
Nadie debe ser nunca desalojado sin representación legal.
No one should be evicted without having legal representation.
Apoyo el derecho a un abogado para los inquilinos porque el estar frente al desalojo.
I support the right for the tenants because facing eviction...
En la corte sin la representación de un abogado.
And being in court without representation of a lawyer.
Ha generado mucho miedo, angustia y desesperación.
It has generated fear and angst and a lot of desperation.
Noches sin poder dormir pensando en lo que sucederá.
Sleepless nights, thinking what would happen.
En mi caso personal, he sido víctima del acoso del dueño.
In my case personally, I've been a victim of harassment from the, from the owner.
Por atreverme a romper el silencio y buscar apoyo.
For breaking that silence and looking for support.
Hoy me enfrento a una demanda de desalojo.
Today I'm facing eviction.
Y solo por atreverme a exigir mis derechos como inquilina.
And just because I am requesting my rights as a tenant.
Pero sobre todo mi derecho como persona y mi derecho a ser tratada con igualdad.
But overall, my right as a person and to be treated with equality.
Respeto y dignidad.
Respect and dignity.
Solo por pedir que se me arreglara la luz de mi cocina.
Just simply by, for asking to fix the light in my kitchen.
Duré ocho, ocho meses sin que se me reparara.
I lasted, it lasted eight months without it being repaired.
Por eso busqué la ayuda de POC.
That's why I looked for the help from POC.
Le pedimos que haga avanzar una ordenanza sobre el derecho... Ay, perdón.
We asked for approval of the ordinance. Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es, este, Janet Ronderos. Y, este, gracias a las organizadoras de abogado, a... Karen...
Hello, good morning or good afternoon. My name is Janet.
Ronderos.
Ronderos. And I am thankful to the organizers.
Yo, este, sí también, este, apoyo a las personas que no tienen vivienda porque yo también he estado en, en problemas que no tengo trabajo y soy una persona de 55 años.
And I also support those that don't have housing, I, and or work. I'm a 55-year-old woman.
Y, y no, no, este, he encontrado trabajo desde la pandemia.
I haven't been able to find work since the pandemic.
Yo estuve enferma el 2022.
I was sick in 2022.
Y hasta ahorita yo me siento bien.
And right now is when I'm starting to feel well.
Sí, estuve con dificultades para pagar mi renta.
I had difficulties to pay my rent.
Y tuve que estar atrasando mi renta y estar pagando 30 dólares.
And I had to pay rent late and I had to pay 30 dollars more.
Y por, por el último mes, yo pague, tuve que pagar 50 dólares más.
And the last month, I had to pay 50 dollars more.
Para que no me fueran a sacar porque por el atraso que yo hacía.
So that they wouldn't evict me because since I was delayed.
Pues ahorita gracias a Dios, mi hijo me estuvo ayudando para pagar mi renta.
Well, right now, thank God, my son was able to help me to pay my rent.
Y le debo también 4,000 dólares a mi hermana porque yo busqué ayuda para que me ayudaran a pagar mi renta, pero yo no encontré.
And I also owe my sister 4,000 dollars because I was looking for help and I couldn't find it. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jill Collins. I support the right to counsel because when I needed it, it wasn't available for me. I ended up in court being intimidated by lawyers that were, you know, there for the landlord. And with that, it led me to basically self-evict and become displaced out of a city where I wanted to live the rest of my life. But unfortunately, I didn't, I was lost and discouraged to keep fighting. It just felt like a uphill battle. And so I just want to thank you and I support this right to counsel. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Mayra García Cortez and I'm a resident from Supervisor District Four and lead organizer for Long Beach Residents Empowered or Libre. I want to thank Supervisor Mitchell for your leadership as well as Supervisor Solis and Horvath for supporting and introducing the motion to establish right to counsel. As organizer for Libre and as a renter myself, I strongly support the right to counsel ordinance. Last summer, Long Beach successfully allocated one-time funds for a right-to-counsel program. This program is crucial for communities since less than 10% of tenants have access to legal representation, putting families at risk of homelessness and displacement. Right to counsel paired with strong eviction protections levels the playing field for tenants and landlords in court and stabilizes our communities to provide better outcomes for all residents. Again, we applaud Supervisors Mitchell and Solis for introducing the motion and we urge all supervisors to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Sharon Buckley with Libre. I live in a building which is filled with disabled seniors who survive on social security. Currently, many are facing eviction because of several rent increases. They don't know their rights and they cannot afford legal representation. I am here to support this bill, excuse me, and to thank Supervisors Mitchell, Horvath, and Solis, for, Solis, excuse me, for bringing this forth. Again, a right to counsel is, is about creating access to equity in courts. Landlords are nearly always represented while less than 10% of tenants receive their legal representation. Right to counsel is about racial and just, racial justice and economic justice and equality. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm going to try to keep it short. Good afternoon, honorable L.A. County Supervisors. My name is Jason Mercado. I am a tenant. I am an active member of my community and I live in S.D. Four. I want to take a moment to thank Supervisor Mitchell for your leadership, as well as Supervisor Han, Solís, and Horvath for also supporting the motion to establish a right-to-counsel ordinance. As a renter, I strongly support a right-to-counsel ordinance. Every tenant should have the right to have legal representation when facing an eviction. With a codified right to counsel, we can reduce the homelessness, develop better opportunities for housing stability for our communities, and more importantly, to create fair ground in eviction court against 85% of landlords who will otherwise have legal representation. We ask that the board votes yes on the right-to-counsel ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Mariana. I'm an organizer with Sage and a tenant in CD8. I'm here to show my support for the right to counsel. I want to thank everyone who has been in support of it, especially our community and our tenants who made it out here today. It's not easy to take time off work. It's not easy to talk about these traumatic events. We've heard stories of suicide, of not being able to feed their children. And I want to make sure that our families are continued to be supported. I feel shame and embarrassed to live in the wealthiest city, in the wealthiest country in the world, and have so many of our communities struggling. So the right to counsel is just a start. It's some added protection to make sure that our communities are stable and housed. But it's not enough. We need to make sure that housing can be secure, can be stable for everyone in L.A. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, everyone. My name is Karen Ramirez. I live in District Two. I also work with Sage as a community organizer and I also worked the front lines as a phone banker with State House L.A. last year. And I was really saddened when I would have these conversations with tenants and I had to give them the bad news that they didn't qualify for legal representation. Today, I am very happy to be able to hear from all of you guys that you indeed believe that the right to counsel is the solution for our community members to stay housed. So I want to applaud you for making this great decision and advancing the work and helping us to end this homelessness crisis. And we are going to be with you because we're a nonprofit and we want to make sure that our communities stay housed. So we're working with you, not against you, and thank you for listening to us. And have a good rest of your day. Make sure that this ordinance passes today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon and thank you all for bringing forward the right-to-counsel ordinance today. My name is Joshua Fujita. I'm a resident of District Three and a law clerk with the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles. I strongly support a right-to-counsel ordinance for unincorporated Los Angeles County because it is truly necessary to level the playing field between tenants and landlords in eviction cases. Every time I'm in court, I see the exact same scene play out again and again where landlords and their attorneys ask as many questions as they want and do whatever they want and tell it to court whatever they want while the tenant's table remains empty. I wholeheartedly believe that this right-to-counsel ordinance, along with its notice requirements, will go a long way in ensuring that more tenants can have access to justice across economic and linguistic barriers. For these reasons, I ask that the board please vote yes for the right-to-counsel ordinance. Thank you and have a nice rest of your day.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Yeah, let me, I'm going to get through this. It's been a long, long time coming, but RTC has finally come. Good afternoon in every language, Board of Supervisors. My name is Mr. Harret, Mr. Pancake, rather, internationally known. L.A. Can, Los Angeles native, housing homeless organizer advocate. Thank you, Holly Mitchell, Hilda Solís, Horvath, for leading the charge for tenant RTC ordinance. Keep L.A. housed, keep tenants first. Los Angeles rent is too high. Strongly support representation for tenants facing eviction. Last but not least, understanding that this is unincorporate cities, but pushing for incorporated cities to step it up. Can I get it right on?
Right on. Next speaker, please.
Okay. Hello, my name is Grace Hestrea and I live in Supervisor District Two. And I am a housing outreach lead at Communities for a Better Environment. We have joined the efforts to keep tenants housed as part of the State House L.A. Coalition. And we focus on tenant outreach and the education. And I thank you Supervisors Mitchell, Solís, and Horvath for supporting the motion to establish right to counsel. In working in the tenant outreach sector, I have heard from tenants about illegal rent increases, illegal evictions, among other unfair treatment and harassment of tenants by landlords. This is mentally and financially devastating for those suffering from these injustices. And for these reasons, I strongly support a right-to-counsel ordinance for legal representation of tenants facing eviction. Right-to-counsel is ultimately about keeping people in their homes and preventing more tenants from becoming unhoused by providing access to equity.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Jesús Rojas from the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. I represent housing providers throughout Los Angeles County. This draft ordinance will establish a permanent program to pay for private attorneys, also known as the right-to-counsel, without having a permanent source of funding available for it. We urge the Board of Supervisors to delay a vote on this ordinance until permanent sources of funding have been established to pay for it in full. Further, we request that the county instead consider creating a new rental assistance program targeted to low-income renters facing sudden illness, injury, or job loss. The data from the State House L.A. clearly shows that the vast majority of evictions are due simply to non-payment of rent. It would be a far more effective use of taxpayers' money to provide temporary rental assistance to renters in order to pay the rent rather than using the same funds to pay private attorneys to merely argue about the rent. Paying the rent will not just delay evictions but prevent entirely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Natasha Smith. I am a housing justice organizer at the Los Angeles Community Action Network and I am here in full support of the right to counsel. And I just want to commend you guys for being in support of this because it is very important. This is just a small step in a large thing that we have to solve. And as long as you guys continue to work with the community to get solutions, then we will be on the track to actually ending poverty and homelessness. But as long as you guys do not work with the community, we'll always have this struggle. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you. The Red Chief Hunt. Thank you for working with the community and thank you for the unity. Thank all of you guys for voting yes on this. But thank all the people out here. Clap your hands, you guys, because you guys stood up for yourself. And that's what it's all about, standing up for yourself. If you can't stand up for yourself, then you're nothing. But to all the Board of Supervisors, this is a good one. Vote yes on it. I get an "I" vote from everybody and we're going to make a difference for all these people. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors. Red Chief Hunt, angels. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Okay, this is a very important ordinance. So right to counsel is appreciated. But there are many factors that can prevent even the last-minute assistance to tenants. So regulation of landlords. You have people like Jeff Palmer. A lot of the apartments that they own, they need repair. And then when the tenants complain about it, nothing's being done and then they're retaliated against. And sometimes they face unnecessary eviction. So this step in assisting them with counsel is good. But again, we have to have more regulation on the landlords, on who really is owning these properties. It's not just about money, but it's about integrity. So the Tenant Protections Act, a lot of that was violated by landlords. And again, when you see them in the court system, you see a big difference in representation. So we thank you again for the county for really looking at the tenants' rights and helping each and every low-income and families in need. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Olivia Corbett. I'm a tenant of a dishonest landlord who's taken me through an unlawful detainer three times now and also been subject to harassment and attempting to defame me. And it's been emotionally distressing. But what's been really fortunate is that I've been able to have Legal Aid be there for me. The first year, the case was dismissed because I got all of their paperwork wrong. The second year, I was representing myself. That was stressful for eight months until, by fortune, I had a lawyer swoop in there the last week and point out that they got the notices wrong from the beginning. And then that was dismissed. And this is an unlisted property. Thankfully, I've had these guys have my back and give me information. I want everybody else to have that opportunity as well so that we don't have people living in their cars or on the street making it feel less.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Thank you to everyone who came to testify today. We appreciate you sharing your stories. And for those who would like to have assistance, we do have staff available. But your testimony has been incredibly powerful and impactful and we appreciate your participation today. With that, it would be appropriate to move on to Item Four before us. Moved by Supervisor Mitchell, seconded by Supervisor Solís to approve the item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solís?
Yes.
Supervisor Solís, yes. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor, Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Motion carries.
Item Six is before us. One more vote to go. Item Six is before us, moved by Supervisor Mitchell, seconded by Supervisor Solís to approve the item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solís?
Aye.
Supervisor Solís, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. With that, both items have passed and we will now move on to Item Five. If you are not staying for this item, please depart quietly so we can continue our agenda. Thank you again for your participation. We're now moving on to Item Five, Consolidated Fire Protection District of Los Angeles County Emergency Response and Infrastructure Special Parcel Tax Initiative Ordinance Petition. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 now to comment on these items. I first want to turn to County Council for clarification on discussion on this item.
Thank you, Supervisor. It was incorrectly stated earlier that we were discussing the FIRE district measure in closed session. That statement was corrected by the executive officer who clearly stated that the board was adjourning to closed session to discuss anticipated litigation. I wanted to just further state for the record that the board did not discuss the FIRE district measure in closed session. Rather, what was discussed under anticipated litigation was an exposure to litigation matter that was brought to the attention of this board by my office. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any supervisors who would like to make remarks? I know that a couple of my colleagues wanted to hold this item, so we had further discussion. So I'll turn it to you, Supervisor Solís.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I would prefer if we could hear from some of the folks that are in the audience who have been here, particularly local 1014. And then we'll hear from, I think, Mr. Maroni. And then I'll be happy to make some statements.
So you'd like to hear testimony first?
Yes.
Would any of my colleagues like to make remarks before we hear testimony? With that, we will turn to public comment. Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who have signed up to speak on these items.
All of the following individuals, please come forward. Dave Giladi and Red Chief Hunt, please come forward and staff will assist you. Moderator, may I have the first remote speaker, please?
Our first participant is Eric Craven. Please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Yeah, thank you. I was looking at, this is a petition of signatures to get this one to come on the ballot to raise money, much-needed money to address the structural problem. But then I think you slapped it down before the signature was required. I'm a little bit confused to be 100% honest. But I wanted to report that over across the street, Mayor Bass vetoed a ballot measure going about the police board across the street. So I don't think that there's any question about that here, but I would ask the board to ruminate on that. Who would be the one to veto a bill like something like this at the Board of Supervisors without an elected CEO? So I don't know. Even could an elected CEO veto something that the great Board of Supervisors thought they want to do anyway? Anyway, thanks for trying to solve the problem of the shortage of resources and appalling neglect that's been applied to the Fire Department. Thank you.
Moderator, are there any other virtual speakers?
Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers in Q2. Address the board.
Thank you. We'll go to speakers in person. Please go ahead. Oh, let's make sure his mic is on.
Is that on?
Yes.
Good morning, Honorable Madam Chair and Supervisors. My name is Dave Giladi and I'm the president of L.A. County Firefighters Local 1014. I represent over 3,400 men and women who protect and serve our diverse communities in all five districts. It's 177 fire stations in your districts. And I'm here with my executive board today and I rise to ask for your support for Item Five and further ask that you move to adopt the initiative as allowed under the Election Code. You have a unique opportunity to be bold, brave, and progressive, as we've seen here today and many other days, on many issues that affect our communities. As provided in Elections Code 9310, you have the ability as the Fire Board to adopt this measure by way of ordinance. We ask that you do that now, here, today. We have a crisis in our communities. We continue to face an unrelenting wildfire.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm so sorry. Your time has expired. Are there any other speakers who would like to continue those comments? Seeing none, we will ask for a comment from our Fire Chief.
Good afternoon, your honorable board. So as forester and fire warden of the Fire District, I'm here to speak to the need for structural stability when it comes to the Fire Department's budget. When I was appointed as Fire Chief back in March of 2023, we did have a projected budget deficit, a structural deficit whereby our ongoing revenue was not enough to keep up with our ongoing expenditures. The department has significant need when it comes to personnel, training, equipment, and the need to also expand our paramedic services in the communities that we serve. Over the last 15 years, we have experienced a 45% increase in the number of emergency medical service calls to the Fire District. However, we have not kept up with the expansion of our paramedic services in our hometown fire stations that are located throughout the district and in the unincorporated areas. So additional revenue is desperately needed by the Fire District. Even though we do have a budget of $1.6 billion, we did have a projected structural deficit in 2023 of $18 million. Myself and Chief Deputy Teresa Barrera of our Business Operations Section, we did implement three important strategies. We did have expenditure curtailments as much as we could. We did address our significant workers' comp challenges in collaboration with Local 1014. And we now are seeking full reimbursement from our 10 contract cities and our five beach cities to make up $60 million annually to the Fire District. So the Fire District does have significant need for additional revenue. And I can answer any specific questions that you might have regarding our budget.
Supervisor Han? Okay. All right. Supervisor Solís?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to thank the Fire District representatives, as well as our local union that is out here, 1014. And thank you for your patience for being here most of the morning. But I did want to say, it's already been mentioned, we have a structural deficit and we've known that for many years. And I know that very well because we have some cities that I represent that we're working with right now to see how we can try to measure this and make it right. But this item before us is about the FIRE measure with the registrar recorder certification of the signatures that have been put forward. And it's our duty, I believe, as board members, to move forward and approve this item. And that's what I wanted to state for the record. I know there's always concern about doing things in a faster, perhaps viewed by some more efficient manner. But we have an obligation also to do the right thing and unquestionably work together, this board, as well as your department, as well as our employees, and more importantly also, to stand up for our residents. And that for me is the bottom line. We're really talking about the Fire District that really is serving the un. We're really talking about the fire district that really is serving the unincorporated areas, which is about 1 million people. So this initiative isn't going to impact the entire county, and I realize that. But nonetheless, everyone relies on the fire department. And especially in days like this, in the last two weeks that we've been undergoing severe heat and fire, we need to have our services provided at adequate funding and a source of funding that's reliable. So I support the item before us. I wish it could be sooner, but it's not possible at this moment. But nonetheless, I did want to give you an opportunity to speak, chief, and also to hear from our union representative. So with that, Madam Chair, I'd like to just register that I am supportive of this item.
Madam Chair, can I just get a clarification? She said unincorporated, but doesn't it impact contract cities as well?
Well, some, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. I'm sorry. I'm talking about unincorporated my areas.
Oh, okay.
And we do have cities that we have a structural deficit with that we are trying to rectify right now.
Thank you for that clarification. Supervisor Han?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you again to President of Local 1014, Dave Giladi, as well as the executive board for being here. And again, you know, it's now 12:30, and I know you've been here since nine this morning. I think I saw you. And thank you, chief, for being here. You know, I think just for this item, I wanted to make clear to our people watching or listening to our constituents what this actually is. And what this is that we're deliberating on is a citizens' initiative to place a special parcel tax on the November ballot, this November, to increase the funding for our L.A. County Fire Protection District. And under California law, citizens can collect signatures to place initiatives on the ballot to be approved by voters. And in this case, the petitioners, not us, right, the citizens out there, collected more than 180,000 signatures that were verified, most recently by our county registrar recorder. So once the registrar recorder certifies it and presents it to us, it is our duty and obligation within a specific amount of time to then vote to place it on the next available ballot. And just to also clarify, a lot of people still don't understand about our fire district and how it's funded. I mean, this initiative will enact a six-cent parcel tax on properties that are served by our L.A. County Consolidated Fire Protection District. And, you know, the special district of the fire department is different than some of our other county departments that we fund. A lot of people don't know why we can't fund the fire department, like we fund the sheriff's department, for instance, out of our general fund. But because they're a special district, they do operate differently, they are funded differently, and their expenses are registered differently. And the only way we can help increase the funding for the fire district is by those residents that are served by them, kind of a fee-for-service idea, model. But the voters have to vote to actually agree to allow their taxes to be increased if we want to increase the funding. There is no doubt that our... For instance, our county general fund has grown over the years, but the fire department's special district budget has not grown as much as our county budget at the same rate. And there are so many financial challenges right now for this district, and there's just no doubt, and it's... We can never say it enough how important our L.A. County Fire Department is in not only just servicing the district, but being available. I mean, when you think about mutual aid issues, right? We're also called upon many times to aid other counties and others outside of L.A. County. There is a severe lack of updated equipment. We know that we need more personnel. We've not been able to keep up with the needs. And the last time we put this fire measure before the voters, it didn't make it. But one of the things that we were very clear about last time was we had to do a needs assessment. We were not going to ask the voters to increase their parcel taxes without knowing for sure what the money would go for and what the real needs were. So we did a very extensive needs assessment for the department, and line by line, were able to denote the exact number of engines and equipment and, you know, other life-saving firefighting equipment that was in dire need of being upgraded, of being replaced or being added. So it's clear that, you know, I think we're known worldwide as being one of the best fire departments anywhere. Our search and rescue team is one of the only two that are called on when there's some major catastrophic event somewhere in the world, the earthquake in Turkey, for instance. So we are known as the premier firefighting department throughout, certainly throughout California and I think throughout this country. But people don't realize that we're in some dire need of upgrading, of additions, to keep, number one, our personnel safe. We know that sometimes inadequate equipment or not updated equipment could actually put their lives at risk. And then, of course, those that they are sworn to serve and protect, both property and personnel, we want them to have the best equipment they have. There's a suggestion that was made that, you know, we just adopt this now. And I think, you know, for me, and I think you sort of said it too, you know, I wish we could have started, you know, collecting this tax, you know, yesterday. That's how, in my opinion, dire the need is for our department. But I think out of respect for even those who signed the petition, who were under the impression that it would be put before the voters, and to the voters, to get the most respect, I think, from our voters, I think that what we've been told legally is our best way to do this is to go ahead and put this to the voters in November. And what makes this one, I think, have more chance of success, it's a citizens' initiative. And we know that with a citizens' initiative gathering signatures, it only needs 50% plus one vote. Last time we put it before the voters, it took a 2/3 vote because we did it another way. So I'm confident that those residents in the fire district will understand the importance and the need and will support this. But I think at this time, we've been advised pretty strongly by our legal counsel that the best way is to put this before in November. And I believe it says in this initiative that, anyway, the tax would not begin to be collected until 2025. So that also, we can't just... It's not going to happen. Even if we adopted it today, it wouldn't happen immediately. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
That is correct.
So nobody wanted this to pass more than I did last time. I fought very hard for it. It didn't. And, you know, I'm, you know, very aware of how important it is to the future of our fire department and the future of the safety of our residents and the men and women who serve with the department to get the residents to agree to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I think so much has been said and said very well. So thank you for that. And with that, item five is before us. Moved by Supervisor Han, seconded by Supervisor Solis to approve the item. Executive Officer, please call the roll. I thought we already had public comment, right? Okay. Just making sure. Item five is before us. Moved by, as I indicated. Anything else? Okay, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Motion carries, five to zero.
Thank you very much. And we'll now hear from members of the public wishing to address the board on general public comment. For members of the public on the telephone, please press one then zero now to comment on these items. Executive Officer, please read the call-in information and call the members of the public who have signed up to speak on general public comment.
Members of the public, you will have one minute to address the board on general public comment. Please state your name. You may only address the board on this item. We will now call in-person speakers, and while they are coming forward, we will take telephonic speakers. Will the following individuals please come forward? Ari Stock, Carlota Jarman, Diane Zimmerman, Dr. Critical Truth Bay, Israel Tabi, Janet Murphy, Jenny Knack, Kathleen Erickson, and Michael Gardley. Please come forward, and staff will assist you. Moderator, may I have the first remote speaker, please?
Our first participant is Paul Hennessy. Please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hi. On the topic of fires, I'd like to see L.A. County do more to adjust indoor air quality, which will reduce the spread of not just wildfire smoke, but also pollution, smog, and pathogens. L.A. County should consider incentivizing businesses, schools, and medical settings to perform indoor air quality inspections and upgrades with ASHRAE 241 standards, MIR 14 HVAC filters, HEPA filters, and FAR UBC. Bills to incentivize this through tax codes or otherwise could create cleaner air, which would lead to fewer absences in schools, fewer sick days at the workplace. Cleaning indoor air will make spaces more accessible for the most vulnerable communities. Lower CO2 levels in the classroom also should be ensured to make children more attentive. Let's have L.A. lead the nation and protect from pollutants, microplastics, pathogens, and wildfire smoke, all which are harmful to breathe in. I know I'd like to voice my support for permanent mask mandates and healthcare settings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Eric Previn. Please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Thank you. It is Eric Previn from Studio City. And I was just following up on last week's meeting when we announced that we would be getting an opinion from the great county council about the interpretation of the Brown Act as it relates to a five-member body and committee, because I know there was some disagreement between the supervisors. And we all will get very confused and upset when there's disagreement among the supervisors, which is why we look to Harrison for the clarity on that. And I'm standing by and waiting, and I'm prepared to cede a few seconds of my time to get an answer. And thank you all for your diligence.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next participant is Loren Keonos. Please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hi. Good afternoon. I'm Loren Keonos, a constituent out of District One, and I am calling to follow up directly with Supervisor Hilda Solis. On October 18th, 2022, the board approved Assembly Resolution 176, honoring that, the history of car cruising and the culture of low-riding. And there was a 90-day plan that the L.A. County Public Works was put into place to roll this out. We did go ahead and have our first three meetings with the L.A. County Board of Superv... District One and Public Works. We are supposed to have District... the meeting number four and meeting number five that were scheduled for December and winter. They have not occurred, and as you all know, Assembly Bill 436, Cruising is Not a Crime, did pass January 1st, 2024. The 90-day plan is well overdue, and I have not had any follow-up regarding the plan.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Roy Humphries. Please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Okay. Thank you for all you good things that you do, but I'll reiterate about those who want to play the race card need to drop that like yesterday. Also, to thank Supervisor Barker for bringing some civility and clarity into the conversation on more than one occasion on that. And to Eric Previn. Eric, I'm willing to go with you to file a criminal complaint with the state of California because I believe this body is... has felony liability as far as the obstruction of the people's right under the act regarding a public address situation on that. So, and I do believe they need to do some jail time to get some real flavor, and they're well-deserving of it, the absolute arrogance and contempt that they've shown the people that they represent. A little jail time is long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Nina Anthony. Please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hi. My name is Nina Anthony. I'm a resident of West L.A., and I'm here today to ask that you keep your promise to sue DTSC to clean up the toxic Santa Susana Field Laboratory background. This board has passed resolutions that promised to sue DTSC if their environmental impact report for the site didn't call for a cleanup to background. That EIR has been released. It does not call for a cleanup to background, and yet you haven't sued. I cannot understand why there would be a delay in suing when people in our community are dying because of the site. The areas surrounding SSFL have been identified to be 10% to 20% higher than the statewide rate for invasive breast cancer. I think that as an all-women board, you can understand how frightening this is. Chair Horvath, I voted for you. We need the progressive ally you promised to be, who can stand up to corporate bullies and inadequate agencies and put our community's health first. Please sue DTSC now to clean up Santa Susana Field Lab for good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Melvin Bailey. Please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Melvin, are you there?
Melvin Bailey, your lines open. Go ahead, please.
Melvin? Okay, moderator, we'll go to the next speaker. Thank you.
Our next participant is Andrea McPherson. Please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Yes, my name is Andrea McPherson, former chair of the Department of the Mental Health, service area leadership team five. I live in service area five. I formerly stayed in Long Beach and also in L.A., Florence and Broadway. I lived in a dilapidated building, and the minute I made any sort of complaint, I was evicted. I went to the court, and even before I spoke, the judge said that I was evicted. I then became homeless. I fought for a whole lot of different things having to do with disabled rights, and I do that now with L.A. Care. We need to have better regulations with L.A. Care. The executive board is coming up with a structure for us. It needs to be looked at first by the board and then implemented towards our program, our stakeholder program. So please, Madam Chair, if you'll let me address Hilda Solis.
Thank you.
Please, Hilda Solis.
Your time has expired.
Have them, please, take that to the board.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers in queue to address the board.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to speakers in person. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time. My name is Kathleen Erickson. I'm a resident of Simi Valley, and our Ventura County Board has been working with your board, and the Ventura Water County... Water Board has been working with the L.A. Water Board as well because of Santa Susana Field Lab. As you hopefully know, there was a nuclear meltdown in 1959, and 65 years later, we're still trying to get a background cleanup. Boeing has been dragging their feet, and DTS, DTSC has as well. 65 years of waiting, and it seems like L.A. Board and our board have been working together. You have promised twice to sue DTSC if they can't come down to the agreement, if DTSC won't come to the agreement of the total background cleanup, and they are still delaying. And the next environmental report, which will be... could possibly be approved, is not going to go to background cleanup. 700,000 families live within a 10-mile radius... 700,000 people live within a 10-mile radius of where the meltdown occurred, the second worst meltdown in the United States. Nuclear.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Jenny Knack. I'm going to pick up where she left off. The PIR not only doesn't uphold, it guts. In several places, it explicitly says that the background cleanup as an alternative will not be implemented. And also, as I said last time I was here, it limits the soil volume maximums to be removed. I understand that you have counsel discussing it, but to... I understand that you have counsel discussing it, but to delay is going to inflate the costs. It's kicking the can down the road, and it's allowing Boeing off the hook. If we litigate now, we're talking one suit over the PIR. If we wait on decision documents to come down that pipeline over the next decade, not only are we talking, you know, eight, 10 lawsuits, which we can't afford, and there will be no political will, people will continue to get sick. We had our 65-year anniversary event welcoming new families of recently diagnosed impacted children. Please.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, I'm Janet Murphy, and I'm standing before you to kindly demand that this board will uphold the promise to sue the DTSC. Please do not postpone or delay this lawsuit. I beg each of you to go forward with this lawsuit now. Now, please. We will continue to demand a full cleanup of the Santa Susana Field Lab, and we need your help, this board, to fight to protect the people, the animals, and the land. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Michael Gardley. I was coming to speak about child support and the suspension of our licenses of regular people, citizens, but also our officers. But now, I'm here to speak about because it just keeps happening to me that they're suspending my license for a child support that I do not owe, that I've always been with my children, and I've showed them through court. Now, I'm claiming senior abuse against county council because I've been coming for 30 years since Zev Yozlovski was in office and been telling you the fraud that they have done against me. And I have the paperwork, I have everything, and I've been claiming fraud, but you keep giving me the same people who will not go up against the county or go to the court and lie to the courts. And I have court orders already, which they're overlooking so they won't see that they're keep suspending me. I work for Paramount Studios. Ain't worked in 16 years. I make $2,000 or $3,000 every two or three days. I haven't worked in 16 years. Why? Because the county is doing fraud. They know to know I know the fraud that they're doing, and they refuse to give me my license to go.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Good luck. Next speaker.
Senior abuse on county council.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Diane Zimmerman with New California State. Please listen to all these people that have been speaking, that are having all the health problems that they're having and need to listen. I wish I wasn't in between them. In case you hadn't heard, France, 1975, Mexico, 1992, Belgium, 2018, all banned mail-in voting because of fraud. Sweden, Italy, Japan, Russia, Latin America countries, and the Middle East do not permit mail-in voting. Please remind us, why do we allow mail-in voting, balloting here in the United States of America? But still, the machines are the worst problem. Did you know that the county sheriff, working with the county board of supervisors, have the power to stop mail-in ballots, get rid of electronic voting machines, and go back to paper ballots, et cetera? How much are we going to be able to afford to pay for machines and the 29 days to vote before and 27 days after? It's a tremendous amount.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Can you speak right into the microphone so we can hear you, please? There's a taller one, if you prefer.
Hi, my name is Carlotta Jarman. Okay. My name is Carlotta Jarman. I wrote it all down, but going through so much. My social security has been cut off without calls. I request that my social security records be audited by an unbiased entity. And the only guilt that I have is that I'm not in a stable housing placing as of yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Israel Tabi. I'm here with my partner, Mr. Ari Stock, and my colleague, Dr. Truth Bay. I've worked in real estate for about 15 years in many different capacities, and I've turned my focus recently to increasing the housing supply specifically for the unhoused and to address, in a very holistic manner, the mental health issues that are associated with that. So, we started a company called Sky Pods, which builds tiny homes at literally the lowest possible price that we can produce them at in a holistic community setting. Dr. Truth Bay will speak a little bit more to that in a moment. The other side of things that I'm working on is, and I've identified a number of properties in District 3, empty multifamily properties and empty office properties or retail properties that can be converted to housing.
Thank you. We'll have someone from my team come speak with you. Next speaker, please.
All right, thank you. As Israel has mentioned, affordable housing is very important. So, I want to concentrate on District 5. There is a lot of property out there in Antelope Valley. As you mentioned, Sky Pods right now is an affordable housing complex. We build tiny homes as well as refurbished property. The thing is, the contracting is what we need assistance with. Peter DeGiafus, who was a new contractor for DMH, we went through this with Dr. Sharon. Tai Odo, which is still there. We want Dr. Lisa Wong to expedite the process for the master agreement. So, that's primary. And secondly, we would like to have the support of services to expedite it as well. So, Tyler Cash, Amy Perkins, Nick Holden, just a few of your staff members to help assist, expedite the project holdings that we are presenting to you. So, we thank you in advance for the support because, again, affordable housing is the number-one issue for L.A. County.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Okay. That concludes our time for public comment, and that concludes today's meeting. Our next regular meeting of the board will be held on Tuesday, July 23, 2024, at 9:30 a.m. We are adjourned.[1766.76][1766.76][music]